All right, we are waiting for one person, but if everyone could please turn their mics on. We will get underway. It is Wednesday, the first of March. It is my pleasure as always to call to order the meeting of the Freeport Planning Board. Item number one is... Sorry, that was weird for a second. Item number one is information exchange. And subitem number one is an update on the Freeport Downtown Vision Implementation Task Force. So the task force did not meet this month, but...
Can you turn your... I think your sound is on.
I muted it. It's muted.
No, it's not muted. It's your sound.
Right, this one's also muted. Maybe I can turn it all the way down.
Sorry, we have a brief technical difficulty.
I think you got it.
Maybe.
No. Is it coming out of the speakers over there?
No, it's coming out of the computer, but it is muted.
Comes the assistance.
You can mute it up at the top of the keyboard.
Yeah, right here? Yeah, I did it.
Just turn it on.
See, it's...
Sorry.
It's on the computer too, new Windows.
Good, I'm just gonna do it from here. Yeah, that would make me stutter all night long. So the droves of people watching online, there's a weird echo in here.
Luckily, there's no...
We are trying to address. I'm not sure why it's... Everything says it's muted.
It's still there. The chipmunk is still there.
I can't get the audio to mute for some reason. Duct tape the speaker maybe?
Here's Anna.
I think I got it. Hello. Heard that you got it. Excellent. We were actually just waiting for Anna. It worked out well.
Perfect.
So, back to where we were. An update on the Freeport Downtown Vision Implementation Task Force. So the relatively big news here is that the task force went before the council and spoke on... In favor of or sort of presented the goals and action items that were identified as being the highest priority. The council was very receptive and funding, which in some cases, the funding was already in place for these projects, so it's not like everything needed funding. But the council did express their willingness to put some town resources behind these projects to hopefully make some progress. And in one case, which we'll talk about later tonight, they even expressed willingness above and beyond, I think, what we went in asking for and sort of identified specifically the permitting process as something to be overhauled and maybe put some resources behind that. And they were very much in favor of that idea. So it's a bigger discussion and we have to figure out how to actually make that happen and, you know, make sure that we're wary, not just of the dollars, but also the staff resources, planning board resources, given that we meet once a month, maybe twice a month. Not twice a month, every month, but coming up, we do have a lot to do. So, anyway, there will be another meeting. As always, the meetings are on... What is it, the last Thursday of the month, I think?
It's tomorrow, isn't it?
I don't think it's tomorrow. There was a somewhat confusing email that went out.
Oh.
But...
The last Thursday, the last one from last month got canceled because it was, you know, snow and school vacation, so...
Yes, so there will be another one in March. They are always public. Anyone is welcome to attend, whether or not you are officially, at this point, a member of the task force. So participation, as always, is encouraged. Item... Subitem number two, an update on the Freeport Climate Action Plan. I'm gonna give this one to Cecilia because she is much more in the know on this.
Sure. So for those of you who don't know, we have a website for the Freeport Climate Action Plan. It's up and running. It's been a really great website that GP Cog put together for us. It has a lot of good information there. And it's a great place for you to find out what's going on and even kind of introduce yourself to some of the climate change impacts to the town. So there's also a comment button that you can start putting comments if you want. We've... Are gonna have a workshop coming up, but not so soon. We don't have a date yet. The Sustainability Coordinator will hopefully start working after this person gets hired in May. And, yeah, and meanwhile, you could also go to the FSAB Lecture Series. So they're having one on Monday. And it's a great way of finding out how to, you know, do things, activities, to become more sustainable in Freeport local staff. And you could also, if you're interested in participating more, there's also local groups that do a lot of good environmental... Also lectures and events such as Electrify Freeport that FCAN put together last weekend.
Great. Subitem three is an update on the working group discussing housing. Mitch, I believe this is you.
Yeah, so that's mine. So we have a work... There's a committee that was established by the council to consider ways to add affordable housing, however that is defined, or to the town and think about what are the big impacts that, you know, what would need to be required to encourage that. And so we're supposed to, within a month or so, deliver at least the lowest hanging fruit. And there's already a collection of ideas that are floating around. As it goes, the city of Portland has a similar exercise going on. And they have assembled a list of 100 different potentials, from zoning to direct assistance to housing trust, to TIFs, to TODs, to all the different tools and toys that could be used. And so we've been sort of picking over those and thinking about Freeport and identifying a few that we'll bring to the council as sort of the easiest ones. I can sort of rattle off the ones that are at the top of the list. And the first one is the subjectivity of ordinances. Particularly if... I mean, I was horrified by last week's planning board meeting. I don't know if we're supposed to talk about that here, but I thought it was...
Planning board or project review?
Not the project review board. And the part that I thought was relevant to our group is the subjectivity of guidelines. The conversation revolved around the word compatibility, which is not a very easy word to come to agreement on.
Depends where your goals are, but yeah.
Right. Well, if you can define that, but I mean especially in this particular corner where it's pretty hard to know what you're supposed to be compatible with. So I thought that pointed to us that the design guidelines that were the only tool that the planning review board had to stop a project that I thought was generally in line with the goals of the town was something very subjective and that we needed to deal with that and make it as objective as possible.
Are you specifically talking about the West Street apartment building?
Yes.
And when you say...
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if anybody... I know Andy was there, so he certainly saw it. You were there. And I thought it was...
Can I just ask a clarifying question on what you said? So when you say the project review board, the only tools they had to stop the project, are you saying that it felt like the town, the momentum in the town, was to stop the project? And the project review board was not?
No, I thought the momentum in the town was clearly in favor of the project. I thought there were... Those that spoke were probably 50/50. There is a voice against it. So then, let's just say the town was split. But the Freeport Vision Plan says we should be encouraging this. So, but the project review board clearly had some members in favor of it, but others vehemently opposed. And they were using to, you know, both the opposition in the town and those on the planning board were revolving around, you know, what can you do to stop a project? You have to have... If a project meets an ordinance, it should be approved. So the issue was, was it compatible? And, I mean, some of it was patently ridiculous because they were saying, well, 30 feet isn't compatible. And then you saw a chart that showed the height lines of all of Main Street, and it's all 30 feet. So what were they talking about?
45 foot, I think.
Forty-five. It was gonna be...
We've talked about that on this board, yeah.
So, and I'm not even saying, you know, I'm in favor of the project. I didn't understand what the objection was. I thought it's gonna be a great addition to the town. I thought it looked nice. But even if it's gonna be stopped, there should be rules. And it's our job to set the rules, and the rules were so unclear, and that pained me. It made it feel like we had to address it.
Well, I think the good news on that front, if there is any, is that it is something that we've been talking about for quite a while. And there is, I think, a decent head of steam. Of course, it moves at the pace of public policy, but there is a good head of steam to revise these...
Yeah, the design... I mean, we've talked about both doing the comp plan and the design ordinance. And I'll just rattle off the rest of the list, but the point, you know, the nut here was the design ordinance is the one that was the issue here, not the comp plan. And so the subjectivity of ordinances. There's data being collected on incomes in Freeport and affordability in Freeport, just so we have... And what's the housing stock of Freeport? So I think over the long term, we should maintain that. But a fascinating statistic that John Egan quote, we had a meeting this morning and...
Can I stop you for a second? Where's that data coming from?
Brett from FEDC collected quite a lot, and so he collected some. And I could probably share it, but it's... I mean, I have it on... I didn't bring my computer.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's all right.
But he collected some stuff about, you know, average wages and, you know, the cheapest thing anybody could buy in the town is, you know, above $400,000. And we talked about rents, and the average rent is $2,300. But, you know, 75% of the wage earners in Freeport could only afford, you know, less. So, anyway, I'm not sure we can do anything about that. Whereas coastal community, coastal community, real estate is gonna be more valuable than internal real estate. So I think the community has a decision to make about just how affordable do we really want. But I think there's consensus that a diverse community is a better community and that we certainly want places for our young people and old people, which leads to the statistic I was gonna quote that John Egan found that says that, you know, there's an age cohorts across, you know, how many people are of what age group? And we have 1/3 the number of 20 to 29-year-olds as the county average and the state average. We have no 20 to 29-year-olds in town. I mean, a remarkably... A remarkable dearth. So, and shorter again in the next group, 30 to 40. And then it starts to be sort of at parity at 40 and above average, above 50. So that's sort of interesting. So the other issues that I thought related to us were the condensing and easing the permitting process, just making the process easier. Some of that relates to that subjectivity. And, you know, I mean, the net result of the planning board meeting was kicking the can down the road another month. So, and costing, I mean, you can add up what that costs a developer, but it just added money. It was anti-affordability.
You mean the... Sorry, the project review board.
The project review... I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for correcting. Then, to zoning. So they were very... Well, they were very focused on the more we can hook off the Freeport Vision Plan, the better. Like the low-hanging fruit, there's a big issue. And, you know, maybe it's a years-long process, but if we're trying to identify three low-hanging fruit things, we should pick it off the Vision Plan as much as possible because that'd be the easiest for everybody to understand. And that focuses on VC1, VC2, VC3. And the... They were somewhat more allergic to C1, C2 conversations without a comp plan. Because of, you know, concerns about sprawl, concerns about do we wanna make a node of development? Is it in one place or all along the place? I mean, you know, that has to be thought through.
If Robert were here, he'd chime in in favor of that.
But nevertheless, the densest you can build in the town of Freeport is eight units to the acre. I mean, that is a remarkably low number. Any multifamily building is 12 to 14. And a normal, you know, in-town multifamily, three-story building would be 12 to 14.
Didn't we lower the land to dwelling in VC1 to zero?
Oh, so in VC1? So, okay, so again, that ties to Vision, so...
But just VC1 or did we do VC2 too? I don't remember.
No, it's just VC1.
Just VC1. Okay.
So that's an issue.
And we did that recently, and that's probably why you're seeing some projects come.
And then we talked about parking. And the committee, the sense of the committee, and we'll see where the final recommendations come out in a month, was to try to take it to zero, to be as bold as possible and let the market decide. And so... And then ADUs.
Yeah.
And the whole LD 2003.
Yeah, that's on our agenda tonight, isn't it? I'm not imagining that, am I?
So, so there'll be more on that, but...
Unbeknownst to me that they were looking at that too.
Yep, cool. Awesome. Thank you, Mitch.
Is Freeport Housing Coalition or Preservation Management involved in these conversations?
So on the committee is Egan, me, two developers, Brad from FEDC, Matt from Freeport Housing Trust. So I think that kind of covers the bases. Oh, and Maya, Maya. So I don't know exactly what Maya does, but she's an interested party in, what's the word, in... In making Freeport a diverse and equitable community.
It's interesting, the point about C1 and C2. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but it's also, it'd be a lot easier to build affordable housing there than...
I agree. I was a minority view on that particular one. But anyway, it just... I was bringing what relates to our group here that I thought that it was at least worth considering. I mean, I don't consider that... They were worried about sprawl, and I thought if all of that was developed into housing relatively densely, I mean, there'd be traffic implications and stuff, but I don't think it would feel like sprawl.
And it's also already kind of... How do we give inputs to this group?
Well, you just... I mean, you could right now. It would be helpful to me to bring back to the group. We have another meeting next week. And, I mean, I think the recommendations will be developed over the next month. And so if you guys all said, gee, what's the problem with the dressing seat? You know, Route 1 South.
I think probably the best place to give feedback would be to get a copy of the recommendations when they become available and then go to the council meeting at which they're presented.
Right.
Does that seem like an appropriate...
Well, I think...
I could just email Mitch and by personal...
I think any input is good, right? Although I don't know what the requirements are of side... I mean, I think...
I don't know really exactly what they're doing and how they're meeting. I had a short conversation with John Egan last night on the LD 2003. And I said, if you guys are looking at that, we'd like to know your thoughts. I think he announced at the beginning of the council meeting that they'd be releasing some recommendations pretty soon, I think as early as next month. I think once they present those to the council and we see what they are, it sounds like some of them are gonna affect the ordinances that have to come through you. You know, maybe hearing you talk, you gave a lot of great information. It might be something that we wanna schedule to have them come to the planning board and share some of the information, like in data that they've collected and talk about it here.
I'm not sure I know totally the end... Like John Egan's managing that part about like, well, now where do we go? And we're just trying to rush through, digest the possibilities and list the most obvious. And I think he seems to wanna do it in a month, but he's also trying to time it with the attention span of the council and the budget and when can they consider this best? So I'm not sure exactly what the end date is.
Yeah, yeah, it's always an interesting, you know, how do we let a working group such as this? And the situation comes up often. How do we let a working group like this do good work in a timely fashion and also take input, right? Because if everybody has their say, it can really slow down the process. So, but everybody should have a say at some point. So it's like figuring out where, you know, how that works.
I'll bring that message back, because it's, you know, I'm just learning as I go how this stuff works.
It was a great update. I think it's...
Taking John Egan's lead on the governance.
I think it's all... I'm really excited to see what recommendations come out of this and, you know, how the planning board can help. I think, yeah, C1, C2...
It's gonna put pressure on our work. That's what I thought. All of this is leading to pressure that we really might have to meet twice a month and move through this stuff.
You know, but a lot of it, I think a lot of the recommendations are coalescing around some goals that we've already identified too. So there is a good, you know, there is a good bit of momentum on some of these things, even though it feels like the momentum's been building and building. We haven't really made a big push yet, but we're getting there, so... Okay, update on status of current and future planning board projects. This is this nice little chart.
Okay, that's a very tentative chart.
Fair enough.
So for instance, today I just added ADUs to the agenda, so it might not move forward. But if it does, then, for example, it would have to be, you know, added back to this. I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for. We did have to wait a little bit for... To see where Town Council was gonna go yesterday with some of the items that are being brought up, such as the charters. So, oh, Section 602 Site Plan was approved yesterday, so that's moving forward. But Canab is... We're still waiting for Town Council and for the licensing ordinance to be developed by the ordinance committee. And then we have, as you can see, sort of like a list of things that are... Kind of, we're kind of currently working on right now. And then there's some things on the pipeline that are more, you know, state brought, such as the stormwater that we need to be brought into compliance with state DEP standards. And that's the town engineer going to be leading that. And then the LD 2003, which is a little bit stuck because we're still waiting for more guidance from the state. So it's an interesting process and a lot of legal questions that need to be kind of resolved before we move forward with that. And then there's the charter projects. So there's a couple of projects there that... It's great that, you know, we have some fully funded projects, such as the RFPs. And then we need to see where we're gonna go with the charter projects. But this is just to give a general idea. And it's a... We're hoping you guys will give feedback on it. And maybe me and Caroline will come up with a better, more laid-out work plan at the next meeting. But we had to kind of pull this last minute and wait for things that are pending.
Any questions?
Yeah, two, two. One is on the comp plan and the design review RFPs. So I'm assuming that they go separate, but somehow they should be timed together, I think, because they will relate.
There's a lot of overlap, yeah.
And so I was wondering, what can we do to help move that faster? And I realize that you guys are the, you know, that you have work to do there. But can you get help on that work? Is there some way to... That's the first step, and we're kind of waiting, and it's all cascades from there.
I think let's wait and have that conversation when we talk about the other item further down because that adds another piece. And we want to have a conversation with you guys to get a little more feedback. And Sam can share how the charter conversation went with the council, which ties into the timing of all these...
Well, the other one that I wanted to bring up, which was permit process streamlining. That's the third one, and they go together. I don't know about the EV and parking lot standards.
Yeah, so under the...
But the... You can't peel off the permit streamlining.
Under the permitting agenda item you have tonight, we wanna talk about all three of those and the timing and the input from the council and hear from the board.
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a note of that question.
Another thing too is that we would like to know if the planning board would like to have the annual workshop with the Town Council on the 28th.
Of March. So that would be Tuesday, 28th. Sure.
Well, are we ready for...
Caroline, can I ask you for input on this?
Sorry, I didn't hear the question. So annually, kind of as part of budgeting process, the council makes an offer to all boards and committees if they're interested to have a workshop. They have historically been about 20 minutes. You can meet, you can talk about what you've been up to, what you're working on, what's in the pipeline. You can talk about future projects. I think last year, we actually skipped it and asked for more time. And then we had a one-on-one workshop because we talked about cannabis and some other big projects. So I think we'll look to you typically. We want the chair or vice chair there. I think it was like a 6:30 or a 7:40 or something. It's a later, a little bit later in the evening time slot. You don't have to. If you're not ready, I think at some point, I don't know if you're quite ready yet, you could work with them after... Or maybe we could decide later tonight after we talk about some other things. If you wanna meet with them. I think if you don't meet now, you could ask later, but then we kind of get into budget seizing and it does get hard to fit into their schedule. But what we did last year is we invited them into your schedule. So it's really up to you. You know, in years past, too, one thing you've done, if you don't wanna meet, but you wanna tell them what you're working on or what you've done this year, you could also send a written kind of report. We could put together a review agenda. So you have different options. It's really up to you guys and Sam and Robert if you... Well, Robert's not here, but if you guys wanna go represent the board.
One thing I definitely don't wanna do is make you guys write anything other than RFPs.
We can lend you a binder with agendas of the past year.
Yeah, so I would rather go in person and do that than make either of you spend any time on that. So, but yeah, I do... I mean, we have... We've been talking to the council fairly regularly about some of these things just because of the integration with the downtown charter projects, the vision charter projects. So I don't feel, I guess, an urgent need, but...
I think if you wanna go, it's... You know, it's real... A part of it is for a budget. I've already asked for more money, so you're good there, which we'll talk about when we get to the permitting thing. I do think if you wanna go, you should spend a couple of minutes and talk about tonight what you wanna talk about because you do wanna have a consensus. You don't want Sam to go and talk about whatever he wants. You wanna make sure there's a consensus of the board. You know, as you talk, one thing that might be great is whatever this to-do list is, so they see what's already on the plate. Because, you know, requests come in all the time for you guys to look at other stuff. You know, people will go to the council and sometimes they'll send stuff. So that could be a good conversation to have and to see what's already on your workload. It's really up to you guys. It's your time.
All right, let's see what comes out of the item seven. No, sorry. What is that? Four, item four. I was way off. Okay. Report on items reviewed by the project review board.
Yeah, so the last project review board, we had on 12 Maple Street. Planning board member Rosemary was subjected to having to go through the process to get a design review certificate to put solar panels on her roof. That's something that...
It's really...
I'll be back soon, so don't worry.
So that went through. And then we had LL Bean at 95 Main Street, some site plan amendments and design review certificate for building modifications for their building at 95 Main Street. I think the proposed changes are primarily on Justin's Way side of the building. So that was also... That, I mean, sorry, that was tabled, and there was a sidewalk on Monday. And then there was a Freeport Village Apartments, which is the multifamily dwelling. And that was also tabled. That was the final approval for the two, the new multifamily dwellings on the corner of West and Main Street. So that was tabled.
So they table it because they don't have the votes to pass it?
They tableed it because they wanted to see cut sheets of the kinds of windows that they're gonna use? Because $2,500 windows are nicer? I was... I mean, I was at home, but my jaw was dropping. They don't... They wanna make sure that they use authentic materials. And AZEC, if any of you know what AZEC is, it's not considered authentic, apparently, even though we're talking about a trim piece at a cornice line. I didn't know who these... I just was dumbfounded.
Are there any known limits to what they can do in that regard?
Apparently compatibility was their weapon.
Everything they want under the banner of compatibility?
I didn't really see... I was trying to look for what's the legal thing that gives these people the right to ask questions about AZEC? And I thought it...
I mean, the... I think the design review ordinance is pretty specific about certain materials, and it does give a fair amount of leeway. I'm not passing judgment on whether that's right or wrong.
Well, maybe I missed it. Maybe they...
How did the developer respond?
I don't know. What?
How did the developer respond?
No.
He did walk out at one point. He just had to walk out.
Oh, just to chill himself.
Is he able to project still be...
He's coming back, yeah.
Yeah, I think they didn't say no, and there were probably... Half the board seemed inclined to approve, but there were two or three that weren't. I thought if they took a vote, they might have gotten it right then, but... but there were two or three that weren't. I thought if they took a vote, they might have gotten it right then, but they didn't take a vote.
All right, well, sounds like that was good TV maybe?
It was good TV.
So, all right, moving, moving, are there other, that's probably the big one, right? The Freeport Village Apartments?
Yeah, and that was it. There were only these three items.
All right, so stay tuned for that, I guess, maybe, yeah, true divided lights or the, maybe that's what they'll come back with, I don't know. Anyway, item number two, review of the minutes of the December seventh, twenty twenty-two planning board meeting. Was this, I think, anybody, oh, Anna.
No, I was there.
I was absent.
Oh, okay, Rosemary, sorry.
Sam, thanks.
I can't, yeah, the months, they blend together at this point. Do I hear a motion to, does anybody have any questions or anything about these? Do you hear a motion to approve as written?
Yes.
So moved in a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right.
I wanted to point out that I thought the minutes were outrageously good.
Hang on.
Yeah, they were, I mean, they were. I mean, you know, you know what happened and if anybody didn't come and they read this, they know what happened. Not like, not like the RSU five minutes.
I don't know, fifteen pages though. I think the record that I've seen is longer than that, so.
I've had novels.
That's good.
All right.
That's right. Great. Item number three will be a public hearing on proposed amendments to section four thirteen of the VC Village Commercial One, VC One. Section four fourteen, VC Two, and section five fourteen, off-street parking and loading of Freeport zoning ordinance. This will be a public hearing to discuss potential amendments to add parking lots as a permitted youth's subject to site plan review in the VC One. Other related proposal amendments or minor changes, just clean up. Especially in section five fourteen, to clarify conflicts that were identified in this process. So we're sort of taking, sticking to our philosophy of while we're at it, trying to get in there and do some good work. So Cecilia, do you want to give us a quick, very brief overview of what went into this?
Sure. So we were given the direction that standalone parking lots is not an allowable use in the VC One district and it, it's, you know, potentially not something that the town has identified as yes, we want more standalone parking lots. However, it does, because we have them and they are non-conforming, it creates issues, legal issues when somebody actually does want to develop them. So we were trying to figure out a way of fixing this so that people are able to, you know, split their lots and sell a part of it and have a standing parking lot remaining with, which they wouldn't be allowed to, or there'd be legal issues with the non-conformity. So in the process, we brought, I brought this over at our last meeting and there was a question asked as to why we couldn't just say parking lots should be there. So we had to do some background research to see why it was there. And in the process, I identified some other typos and some discrepancies, not discrepancies, but some conflicts with some other sections of the ordinance. So if you want to walk through it, now on section four thirteen, we will just have parking lots. And then there's a correction to what I believe was just a typo or something that did not get updated when they edited, made edits to these, to this section. So that would be on four thirteen, C twenty-five. I actually had to go back to nineteen eighty-six to figure out what was the intention of that cross-reference. But we finally figured it out. Also then, if you turn to the second page, we then try to clarify the setbacks.
Yeah, I like this clarification a lot.
So we would be deleting the, the, Nick Adams, the code officer pointed out that because we already have that non-conforming language, we wouldn't necessarily need this because you can expand laterally as long as you don't go any closer than you already are. However, Caroline pointed out that we could be potentially reducing the setback by doing this so that you know, we are, the problem is that there was, what was there before was just for new structures and it didn't really address old structures. And then on the next section, we had to include and also notify folks at VC two. Because the only surface parking lots that were allowed on VC Ones would, were surface parking lots that would be serving buildings class A or B as defined in design review ordinance on the VC Two district. So we had to do looks into why that happened. And the only change to VC Two, section four fourteen is just again, that same reference from nineteen eighty-six that just didn't get updated, so it was confusing. So then we moved the standard from section for the VC Two district into where I think it would belong, which is on the parking standard. So that goes to, so then we touched upon five fourteen. So we made some changes to five fourteen. So in the first one, and this is perhaps why we have been permitting standalone parking lots in the recent years, even though it was not a permissible use, there's this conflict between how it defines how it started considering it an accessory use. So we're crossing that out to clarify because that conflicts with the definition of accessory use. And then, and then we're adding to the section on district parking requirements that Village Commercial Two District, off-street parking can be met on the VC One districts for those specific types of buildings.
I think that's a great cleanup. That's where it should be.
If anyone noticed any other cross-references errors that I might, might have made, just pointed out. And then once again, we didn't want to open the can of worms and fix a lot of, or clarify or make the language a little clearer on, you know, for, for instance, this, the parking structures. We're not making huge movement here because hopefully those will be addressed when we're redoing the design review and looking at those districts a little closer. And the same with five fourteen, maybe someday we'll reorganize it so it's a little easier to, to follow and, and read.
There'll be plenty of notifying this district over the next couple of years so we can sneak it into another, another public hearing.
Yeah.
Sure. Great. Any questions on this before we open the public hearing? Do you hear a motion to open the public hearing? So moved by Anna. And Wayne has the second, all in favor? All right, public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this? And as a reminder, please speak into the mic and state your name for the record.
I am Kristen Dorsey and I'm a member of the Freeport Sustainability Advisory Board and also the liaison to the Tree Task Force. And this is actually our first public premiere performance because we just got, it was a year ago in January where the group actually came together and started our work. The platform for the Tree Task Force is back, I think it was two thousand and nineteen, the Sustainability Advisory Board, I think it was grant funding, worked with Project Canopy, which is part of the main forestry service. And they did, it was a, basically a citizen science project where they trained people to go out and survey the tree canopy downtown, but then also into the peripheries, like there was some work in South Freeport Village and then over Bow Street Way. And then the Project Canopy took all the data they collected on the trees and put together some information, some data about the trees that we have and then also quantified some, the benefits of having tree canopy in any municipality, you know, financial health, natural benefits of trees. And they actually put some numbers on paper. So the Tree Task Force started its work. It was kind of put on hold because of COVID. And there's five members. Tyler Colley is also here. And we have, over the past year, we've met with different people like Earl Gibson, who is our official tree warden. He's appointed by the town manager, just to find out what.
Speaking of. That exact moment.
Just walked in and heard manager. How's it going?
We're just like commending that you appointed Earl Gibson as the, as the tree warden. It's all good. Come on in. We've met with Caroline Pelletier and just kind of did some background research. We have written a tree ordinance, which is sitting on the lawyer's desk, I assume, and also put together a tree program. So basically, what we were, so one of the highlights of our public tree program is it says thoughtful and appropriate stewardship of a community's trees provides economic health and social benefits to the community, including reducing stormwater runoff, reducing air pollution, reducing energy costs, sequestering carbon dioxide, safer roadways, and aids in maintaining vibrant and resilient ecosystems. And well-planned landscapes calm traffic, boost retail sales, reduce stormwater fees. So these are all the data points that Project Canopy actually, like specific to Freeport, given what we have now, they, they put some numbers to it. And one of the primary recommendations was increasing our current town canopy, which is about twenty-five percent urban canopy cover to thirty-five to forty percent. And this can be a combination of public and private canopy expansion. And now that you are poking around in the parking ordinances.
Trying to see when's this gonna come.
Yeah, so our specific task is, right now, we're supposed to just be looking at downtown public trees. We do eventually want to become a, kind of a resource of information for and find ways to incentivize private property owners, both residential and commercial, to also help get, increase that canopy. And clearly, our downtown has lots of parking lots, which some of them, most of them are privately owned. So that's like this little kind of edgy thing where we kind of can't get our fingers in there yet, but it's, it, there's such a, take up so much space. So now that you are working on the ordinances, we're hoping that we'll be able to work with you to also include in your ordinance some requirements around percentages of permeable surfaces, boundary plantings, and then actual shade tree specifications in terms of like per parking space, this many trees of this particular size and/or other lower beneficial plantings when, you know, there's obstacles such as, you know, building eaves or wiring and that kind of thing. So we just wanted to put it out there that it also sort of works into the climate action plan that's coming up. There is some goal, there are some goals in there that the sustainability committee around things like green space and, and tree canopy in terms of all the benefits to climate resilience and that sort of thing. You know, heating and cooling costs and that sort of, those issues that speak to sustainability and resilience. So I think that's it, but definitely wanted you to know that we're, we're in motion and we're available and we'll obviously be watching too and hoping that between just the work you're doing here with ordinance provision, but then also, you know, talking about the climate action plan, you're going to be part of that too, that you'll keep in mind that we would like there to be some requirements in new parking lots. And there's, you know, plenty of other towns have these requirements. We don't have to like start from scratch and kind of look around and see what is doable and workable for the commercial property owners, private in town.
I had no idea we had a tree task force.
Been working very quietly, but diligently. We've actually gotten a lot done in just a year.
We have a question.
So Kristen, in your work with these committees, is there any discussion at all about whether there's any significant risk of forest fires in this area?
No, I mean, we're focused really on the downtown. I mean, one of the things they are telling us to really keep an eye out for are the invasive insects, that sort of thing, and think about diversifying the trees that we have here. And then we also, there are lists of climate resilient species too, because obviously the climate is changing.
My next question would be about brown-tailed moths, whether that's also, if that's part of the discussions they have.
Yes, it is. And we actually just had a meeting with Jeff Tarling, who just retired from Portland. He's been their tree, their.
Arborist.
Arborist for thirty-four years, I think he said. And we had a great meeting with him and that was, you know, he's driving into Freeport and he's like, so, how about those brown-tailed moth cater, like that's what he looks for when he's like driving into town.
So is there any kind of specific plan if we get some kind of major invasion?
We haven't gotten that far yet. Well, it's, we're trying to put off the major invasion, actually. So yeah, that's something we're going to be working on and thinking about too, is to kind of be proactive in that realm in far, in terms of the trees that are already there, that they're, you know, possibly going to be invading and then diversifying the species so that we don't attract and have trees that don't last.
Andrew?
Have you come down to recommending? Have you come up with a recommendation list of trees?
We're almost, yeah, we're, we're almost there. We're working.
You know, I see up and down Route One where I live, they put in these trees and they last a few years and they sort of break off.
Well, and so that's.
When they first proposed this thing, I said, it's just, you know, in New England, huge rock maples and stuff, where, you know, and sugar maples would just be beautiful up and down the roadside.
Yeah. Well, so, and that's the other aspect. It's not just planting, but also maintaining and managing the trees so that they are long-lasting and, you know, grow to heights where they are providing the maximum benefit. Because the other piece around that is the actual planting, like how it's done and how it's protected around the, you know, planting site and base of the tree in terms of making sure, you know, it doesn't become compacted or the road salts, there's different types of, and Jeff Tarling gave us lots of specs on that. The types of planters. I mean, they're called different things, but he said often just like granite, like even just four-inch granite slabs around the base of the tree at a certain distance. I mean, there's all sorts of, you know, scientists, science around this work. Portland and South Portland have done lots of really incredible.
Does Yama still have? They always had a tree warden over there and they have a big invasive elm thing, if I remember, ash thing.
Yeah, so actually, one of our members also just met with, they just have a very, a tree task, a tree task force also that's actually having a hard time kind of getting started. They do have a private foundation, I'm blanking. They do have a private foundation, I'm blanking out right now, named after the.
Frank Knight.
The Frank Knight Foundation. And they've done some really cool things there also in terms of like tree walks, you know, where they have like little QR codes near trees and it just tells you what they are and how old they are and, you know, the benefits of those trees. But that was kind of done through this private foundation. But.
The Yama Village Improvement Corporation?
I think the Frank Knight Foundation did a lot of that work around the actual new, like the tree plantings that have happened down there.
Was the tree warden for 50 years or whatever.
Yeah. I don't know, I don't, I don't know if they have a tree, another tree warden yet. I don't know.
Somebody took his place, but maybe not.
Yeah, could be.
So I think in the, you know, the goal, which Cecilia alluded to here, is in adding parking lots as a, as a permitted use, somewhat counterintuitively, we are hoping to make possible more redevelopment and, and things that might not be possible under the current, current language, open up more possibilities for the sorts, excuse me, the sorts of development that, that might allow for planting and, and good stuff on the tree.
And clearly with new housing coming into, there's going to be some reconfiguration, like, you know, changing land use, like where lots are, where they need to be.
So I, I think I see the best, the best use of, you know, the, the recommendations that your task force comes up with is be, I mean, the, a species list would be fantastic. And all of these recommendations, I think, going into the design review guidelines, that is going to be a great spot to try to find ways to promote, you know, a more specific vision for the canopy downtown. So yeah, I mean, I think, I think there's going to be lots of opportunities to take these, you know, these recommendations.
Yeah, and so we also, just as a group, did a, a site walk last summer, just walked at a big circle around downtown to look for places that just need some trees, places, you know, there's some stumps, just, you know, down to the ground, who knows when they were cut down. The issue with our downtown that makes it challenging in a lot of places to create, like actually plant canopy trees, which is not what we're limited to. I mean, there's other ways to do plantings that are, also provide some of those, all those benefits. But because our downtown is so, like the buildings are all so close to the road and then, you know, where the lines are and all that sort of things, there's, there are some places where it would be nice to have a tree, but you can't plant a huge canopy tree there. So yeah, there's a lot of moving parts right now too, just between, you know, revisioning the downtown and where things are going to be and what they're going to look like, but.
Well, thank, thanks for, yeah.
Can I just make one comment? I mean, we were talking before about the project here on West Street.
Yeah.
They, one of the other objections that was brought up was that it needed more trees. And I wonder whether you couldn't talk to the developer, right? I mean, you're talking to us about standards in the comp plan and a design plan that's going to take a year to develop, but right now there's a project.
Yeah.
And they were asked to go back to the drawing board and show better trees.
Mm-hmm.
And if you called them up and gave them some advice, they could go back to the planning board and say, we spoke to the tree committee and they told us that, you know, this would be good.
And that's as, as.
Did you do that?
Yeah, so and our group is so new, like you didn't even know it existed yet. But that's what we would also like our role to be is like have an available list. And one of the members of the committee actually was a landscape, she is a landscape architect. She's retired now, but very knowledgeable. And to, that would be ideal, is to have some of these private developers now look to us as a resource, like, hey, you know, what, what would be the most, you know, beneficial and effective kind of plantings to have here in terms of species and size and, you know, the location and all that. And we did, actually, we did do that. There was the other potential development project down.
Mill Street and Depot.
On Mill and Depot, but this one's going through right now and the guys.
Yeah.
They're coming back in a month and this is what they're working on this week. I mean, it's like, I'm sure if you called them.
Well, honestly, I was at that meeting and.
They fight over the trees.
They're fighting over trees, yeah.
They, and they did go back and like the, I hadn't seen drawings in between like first and last, but I mean, they had actually looked like taken some recommendations and put in some more landscaping.
And get two and a half inch trees, you know, but I don't know if they're the species that you think would be best, but.
I don't know that they were.
If you're gonna stop by and look at it, send information from their landscape architect.
Yeah, but I had approached, oh God, I'm forgetting his name now, whoever the engineer was that was working on the.
That one's not going right now.
Right. No, but I'm saying, but they were very, I said, hey, by the way, and we were very new then, and he's like, oh yeah, we'd love, we'd love to work with you and hear from you, you know, preemptively, yeah.
Just to circle back to the parking requirements that we're talking about today and just maybe to flag this to when we are working on these ordinance. So, you know, some towns, for example, Brunswick, they have requirements for how many trees you have to plant per parking lot. So it kind of like we, we're not working, today we're not working on parking standards, but in looking at this, I did notice that we don't have them, you know, which a lot of towns do. And for instance, Brunswick also has a minimum amount of, of, they have a maximum amount of parking and they also have a minimum amount, but they also have a minimum amount of bicycle parking that's included and, and trees. The other place where the trees, and since we were previously talking about ordinances down the pipeline that could be really incorporated is with the stormwater. And there are a lot of different types of street, not necessarily canopy types, but different types, and sometimes they don't last. There are stormwater trees that they plant and sometimes those can be incorporated into the street scape if we end up designing, making design standards for those too as we work on the downtown vision. And those can be used to calm traffic and things like that, but they could also use to treat stormwater.
Yeah, exactly.
So there is a lot of places where we can make our ordinance more tree-friendly and that could have, you know, mutual benefits from walkability to, you know, stormwater and meeting Clean Water Act requirements to making it look pretty and making it, you know, having more trees and sequestering carbon.
Yeah, and I mean, we do kind of want to focus our group now more on like getting it into ordinances and that sort of thing. So it's objective.
The design review.
It's not just pretty, like deciding who thinks what is pretty.
Where.
It's an objective, like here's what should be there and why.
I think the design review guideline development process overhaul, that's going to be where.
And that's your, design review falls under planning board as well?
Developing the standards.
Okay.
Falls.
All we're doing tonight is making some super minor changes.
Right, I knew that.
Technical changes to the ordinance.
But coming up.
But coming up, we're going to rewrite the comp plan and the design review plan.
Yes.
And the design review ordinance, and that's.
Yeah.
Where this would go.
We've, I think, put the design, overhauling the design review standards, kind of on a fast track for a couple of reasons, after hearing from the council and to piggyback on the momentum of, from the downtown visioning process and also with an attempt to streamline permitting. We see this, the design review guidelines as a way to try to get some of these things done. So I really, I think that's, that's your opportunity to come and, and I think there's going to be lots of ways to use the recommendations and, and put them to good use. I do want to keep moving on the, the public hearing here and see if there's anybody else who wants to comment on the, the public, sorry, not the public, the parking lot.
These changes.
Added here.
A couple of things.
The addition of, of parking lots as a permitted use. I know we have a couple of people on Zoom. Anyone on Zoom who wishes to comment, please raise.
Raise your hand.
Their virtual hands. Do we have a hand raised?
Oh no, I don't see any hand raised.
Okay, we'll give you another few seconds to figure out how to do that if necessary.
Did we figure out why the person didn't get recognized when they raised their hand last?
No, we didn't figure out.
Or I probably wasn't just paying attention at that particular moment for some reason that we moved on.
It also wasn't a public hearing, so we hadn't called out and it could be that we were.
I think that's what it was.
Yeah, so right now I can, I can allow both people to talk, if any of you want to talk. Doesn't look like anyone wants to talk.
Go ahead.
I'll comment.
Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Anna and Wayne, again, all in favor? Excellent. Public hearing is now closed. Any questions on the board? Fairly straightforward one, I think.
I think we should make a motion.
And much more to come.
I think you should do it.
There is.
You're on fire tonight.
There is a motion.
Where is it?
There is a draft motion. Do you have it?
Hi, this is the right one, right? Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, shall I do it?
Go for it. It's, it's yours.
I'm just gonna read it. Be it ordered that the Freeport Planning Board recommend to the Freeport Town Council the proposed amendments to Section 413, Village Commercial 1, VC 1, Section 414, Village Commercial 2, VC 2, and Section 514. Off-street parking and loading of the Freeport zoning ordinance, adding parking lots as a permitted use, subject to site plan review in the village. Do we really need all this stuff? Yeah, I guess so. In the village, Commercial 1, VC 1, zoning district 413. We also recommend other related amendments to clarify confusing language regarding setbacks in Section 413. In Village Commercial District 1, VC 1, correcting a cross-referencing error in Section 414, Village Commercial District 2, VC 2, and amending Section 514. Off-street parking and loading to clarify conflicts were identified in this process. The planning board finds that while the town does not want to incentivize the development of new standalone service parking lots in the VC 1 district, these changes are necessary to remove potential legal barriers in the form of non-conforming use to existing properties that can potentially prevent the desired redevelopments identified in the Freeport Downtown Vision Plan 2022. Planning Board also finds that the recommended amendments are in general harmony with the Freeport Comprehensive Plan's vision, let the town remove unnecessary barriers that might exist in local regulations.
Excellent. Do I hear a second?
Go ahead.
From Andrew, all in favor? A unanimous vote.
Oh my.
Great. Item number four is a general discussion of the permitting process and land use ordinances in Freeport. So this is an item that Cecilia and I talked about putting on the agenda because of the response, or at least one of the reasons was the response that discussions around streamlining the permitting process, which is one of the, the project charters that came out of the downtown vision process, is streamlining the permitting process. The response that the council had to it is, let's go, what do we need to, like, what can we do to make this happen? It's been something that people have identified, I think, for a long time. The town has a little bit of a reputation, or at least historically has had a little bit of a reputation as being more toward the challenging end of the spectrum for development. So I think it is a worthy cause, as with any worthy cause in, you know, this sort of work. I think there, it will be tricky and potentially contentious, and of course, it's a can of worms because it's not just, you know, streamlining a quick little process. It also gets in, it, the permitting is embedded in all of these other things like design review and the downtown vision and of course, the comp plan, but you know, we can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. We're going to have to go after some of these things and try to make some changes before we have a complete comprehensive plan in a couple of years. And so that, I think really what I, yeah, hopefully not a couple, but you know what I mean, 18 months, maybe.
Well, but how do you, yeah, go ahead.
So I think, yeah, really, I just wanted to sort of get the ball rolling and have, yeah, real high-level discussion of what we might be able to do to some of the, some of the low-hanging fruit that we might be able to pick off and how we might sort of structure this project to get it done. Does that make sense?
Yeah, do I want to give you another update on the revolver last night?
Yes, please. I have to get a glass of water, but I will be back.
So like Sam said, when we went to the council to talk about charters, we, everyone knows we have funding to update the design standards. I think, you know, anytime we update our land use regulations, they need to be found in general harmony with the comp plan. The vision identified some principles that are consistent with our current comp plan. You know, we've always can, cared about our historic downtown and retaining certain things that are important to Freeport, you know, like the importance of the natural environment, retaining that historic charm. So I think we can do certain things that will align with the vision and the current comp plan. And if I already guessed, I can be wrong, would probably also align with the future comp plan. So we have money for updating design review. It's something we've been talking about for years. It felt like we made some good progress as far as we had like a, like little subcommittee of planning board, project review board, and FEDC. We'd kind of started to put some good work into it and we were about to go to the, this was pre-vision. We were about to go to the council at the annual workshop. We were going to talk about it and see if other people were interested and get some funding and then COVID happened. And the world got shuffled, the project got delayed, et cetera. We did a downtown visioning process. And so, you know, I had talked to Sam, we, we've kind of had this, I think, a lot of us that have been working with these documents, including planning board and project review, are like, okay, we know we need to fix A, B, and C, or whatever they are, in the design review ordinance. You know, we've had growing pains recently. We've seen a lot of people come out of the woodwork for projects and they've been giving us a lot of public input on what they like or what they don't like, and there's a lot of mixed feedback. So I think at this point, there's funding to update the design review ordinance based upon, you know, some of these recent projects. I think we need to get an RFP out there. Step one of that really needs to be a little bit more, probably hosted by you guys, some public workshopping to get a little more feedback on exactly what types of buildings we want to see in some of these locations downtown.
And to clarify, you're saying, sorry to come immediately back and jump right in, but you're saying that step one after a consultant has been hired.
Well, we would have to craft this into the RFP as part of it. We'd have to say, okay, we want to hire somebody, give us a proposal to look at the design review ordinance. Part of that process is going to be a couple of public meetings to kind of work out a little bit more, some community discussion on what we want to see in these locations.
But you don't have to know that before you write the RFP.
No, but we want to work that into the RFP because.
Working the requirement.
But it works in that there's going to be a public process along the way. You have to design a public process.
Yeah, I think, you know, for board members that have been on the planning board, we've kind of in the past talked out, here you go, update the ordinance. But as we've seen some projects come forward and upon completion of the vision, we need, we need a little bit more people in a room to figure out exactly what we want, what kind of end product we want to see, because that's going to drive. That being said, we also know, like Rosemary had to go to the board for solar panels. Our ordinance is old. Solar panels weren't a thing back then. We also know there's huge changes in materials, you know, the, the vinyl of 2023 is not the vinyl of 1980, you know, so we've seen a lot of changes. And then we also know that from the vision, we want to be more accepting, we want to be more accessible. You know, we have people now that come in for EDA ramps. So you know, we've already flagged some things that we feel like are weaknesses in our ordinance. And if we decide we want to regulate them, that's fine, but we at least need to acknowledge them. So that's project one that's funded. I think the feedback Sam and I got is there's a, and there's cleaning up the whole process of design review as we go along in that. I think the feedback Sam and I got from the council when we were talking about the project charters is like, this is very important to them. They almost, or I think some of them feel like this is even more important than the comp plan. That being said, Mitch is getting excited.
I do.
That being said, you know, we have a comp plan and comp plans, you do your comp plan and then you submit it to the. and then you submit it to the state and they review it for compliance with the Growth Management Act. There's certain things that we need to have in there, we need to have data, we need to find growth areas and all this other stuff. So that finding is set to expire in October 2023. After that happens, our status goes into unknown. Some grants ask about status of comp plan, you know, it can help with stuff like that. I think it, more important to me is that we have a vision for where our community wants to go. And we have general consensus on some things to move it forward. So I think I, you know, the comp plan got delayed because of the vision. I don't feel like we can put it off forever, but you know, I did have a conversation with Sam. And once we get one of, the comp plan RFP is almost done. But honestly, once we get one of them done, a lot of the RFP is just boring legal stuff that you gotta put in them all and some background around Freeport. So we can, like, once we get one of them done, we're gonna have like a good cut and paste that we can do in portions. So we can't put the comp plan off forever. I don't think we should. I think we should still get going, but I think we'd want some feedback from the board on a little bit of the timing because we might want to shuffle. And then the third thing that I wanted to give you an update, I waited till you came back because I brought it in at the end. Last night, you guys had made some amendments to site plan review. And so that's just when someone comes in for a site plan, not a subdivision and not in the design review district, you know. Route 1 South, Andy's on, you know, just, or Route 1 North, just standard site plan doesn't include some of those other things. So you guys made some recommendations, which the council did approve last night. You know, some of the counselors indicated that they would have definitely been open to us going bigger with some of the thresholds. They are okay with staff.
For staff review.
For staff review and then all, for town planner approval and then also the staff review board. There's willingness, I think, and desire to go bigger. So that's something I think we can have on the horizon. That being said, when we talked about the charters at the last meeting, the council really wants us to further clean up permitting process. And they would like us to look at bringing in an outside consultant and do some comparison of our standards and processes with other surrounding municipalities of the same size and have somebody from the outside just take a clean look and make some recommendations to make the process easier. So we did this, Andy, you might remember, right before I came to town, I think in the late 90s, we had an outside firm do this. They looked at our standards. We actually shifted our process. We now have two boards. We streamlined some different things. We merged design review and project review. So we've done it before and made some changes. And so 20 years later, a lot of stuff is coming back. So the desire is to have us do that again. I have made some calls. It's not something we can accommodate for in the current budget. So it would have to be a budget request. So we have money. Don't get disappointed, Mitch. We have money for the design review update. We have money for the comp plan. We don't have money to have someone come in and look at site plan review. And the other thing I think we might want to tag on to that is having them look at the subdivision review process at the same point in time. So I have talked to the finance director and at the next council meeting, they did the first introduction of the capital budget last night. We are gonna put another budget request and I think we're gonna start at $40,000, which should be more than enough and would give us some wiggle room to add, looking at the subdivision or if there's other ordinances that come into play with development in Freeport, it might allow those to tag along too. So that project does not show on your list of projects tonight. It's something I think that's on the horizon, but we would need funding for. The other project that that ties into, just to give you, really the, the full spectrum of what you guys look at is design review, which the council could do too, but planning board's really taking an active lead. The zoning ordinance, and then you have the subdivision ordinance. So we are still looking at the subdivision ordinance. Subdivision ordinance is out for high level legal review. Our current town attorney had not looked at it before. You have the standards that Cecilia brought you that we were missing. We're doing some additional cleanup. We're gonna have some stormwater. So we'll be getting that base document cleaned up and in good shape and then potentially have someone look at the cleaned up version to reflect, which will then reflect current practice and can maybe weigh in on that as well. So lots of moving pieces. And then between all that, you know, we continue to try to clean up our ordinances because we have other sections that you can't understand or there's bad cross-references like you cleaned up tonight. And you know, all of that does just further contribute to the complication of doing things in Freeport when you can't open the ordinance and go to the right section. So that's a high-level overview of all of them. I think we'd love to get some thoughts from the board on order, timing, et cetera. Did I capture it all, Sam?
Questions?
Yeah, I mean, so every time we talk about this, I end up feeling a little bit discouraged because it's like, there's so much, you know, to capture. It's a big project.
There is a lot to capture, but you know, I think, you know, we're looking at the village one and Cecilia is super sweet. She's reading it and she's like, oh, we should fix this too. We should fix this too. And it's like, okay, we've, we've got to fix things, but then at some point, like, we need to stop and move forward with bigger project. I think these are all big, important projects that can be done at one time. And if we're doing some other cleanup in the middle and being reasonable, like, okay, it was great to know we want to put parking structure language for the future. But it's not, we're not gonna dig into that today because Sam's gonna get disappointed and discouraged when we talk about these three projects. So it's really trying to find a good balance in staff time, the board's time, and funding.
Yeah, I mean, I think, to me, the design review guidelines are really a key part of all of this. And so to me, that is still the highest priority. And I think that delaying the comp plan to put that ahead really won't hurt us that much in the long run because I think so much of what comes out of that will be useful. And if we do, and if we have a public process too, you know, that, that's part of the updating the design review guidelines, then I think the information that comes out of that public process can be useful in the comp plan. Sort of like the downtown visioning was useful.
And the climate action plan.
Like, we have a lot of other plans that can feed into the comp plan, whether it just be through data and public input or attaching things as appendixes.
I agree with that, Sam. And I also think that there's a lot of momentum now, right now at the downtown vision plan. And like, let's use that and try to push to get things simpler and more streamlined for the project review ordinances. And then that can all link in with the comp plan.
Yeah, like, like Caroline said, we don't want to put the comp plan off forever.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying put that off forever.
I don't feel like, honestly, it would be putting it off forever at this point. I feel like, you know, they're in line. We're just gonna let somebody cut ahead, but not that far ahead, like, just one step ahead.
I don't understand the mechanics well enough to, I'm assuming that based on what you're saying, they're, they're separable. But you can do.
They are two different projects, yeah.
And you can do the design review, the design ordinance first. And there's nothing, and it won't. We might have to clean up something backwards after you do the comp plan.
We can, I think we, we can clean it up under the current comp plan. You know, the current comp plan flagged looking at the village overlay district, which will be part of the design review cleanup. It, you know, has references to preserving historic features or, like, there's enough connection you can make. You know, there are gonna be some things that come up that I might say, yep, can't do that. For example, you know, we talked about Route 1 South and doing cleanup. If we want to revamp what we're allowing on Route 1 South or certain areas of town, Cecilia and I can be like, okay, you guys need to wait. Our comp plan's almost 12 years old. We need to kind of reevaluate some things, what people want to see where before we take on certain projects. But if something is a priority to us now, it's been a priority in the past, it's been identified there and we think we can have you go forward and you can find consistencies of how it's in harmony, we're gonna do that. But we're also gonna tell you when we think you're going too far.
That's fine. Yeah, I think that's fine. And I had one other question is, pre-COVID, when we had the consultant who came here and was like trying to do drafting the new design review ordinances, is there anything from that that we can use?
Yeah, there definitely is. So, you know, we had looked at design review and I think, you know, there was consensus like, okay, you know, let's get prescriptive on some of these things, you know. Let's say you can use this type of fencing or you can do this or that and not have to come to the board.
You can put a standing seam metal roof on your house, maybe.
Yeah.
Asking for a friend.
Maybe.
Without going to, you know, paying your $55 and going before the.
And there, I think, you know, as we did the visioning too, pretty much anything you do in design review, a strict reading of the ordinance would require review and approval. So you can't just put out a bench or you can't put outdoor seating. You can't, you hadn't been able to just put out tables and chairs. And so, you know, in my opinion, we have smothered some of those kind of urban design components that we all want now, we've enjoyed, especially with COVID. You know, first choice for me is always to eat outside, except for today. You know, so we, we want some of those things. And those are things we've had a lot of really strict regulations on in the past. So yes, there's consensus on, on certain things.
One other question. So you, you've been doing the comp plan RFP. This would change your, I mean, you're gonna finish that anyway and then do this.
I'm gonna take it out of order a little bit, but I'm gonna do some cut and paste to what I already have crafted and put into the other one. It's really just making sure we get the wording. I think, you know, one other thing I'm aware of is you guys have jobs. You're volunteers. We already ask you once a month to come for a few hours and have time away for your family. So I think as we get in to some of these projects to get them off the ground, I think one thing we might want to look at, you know, we might want members of the planning board to help us interview consultants. Or if we need a small working group with two people to come in with Cecilia and I to look at some standards and, and work on some stuff so that we can get it done faster. That might be something that we look at as we get some of these big projects. Because I'm sure you all have your own interests too, like you might want to work on one, but not the other, vice versa.
One other comment about the design ordinance. I, I think we've talked here before about patterns. And I think it's, that's part of the problem is that there aren't patterns in the ordinance. And so, and I think that affects your consultant, you know, how you write the RFP. That we need, I, I mean, that's a, that's a bigger conversation, but it affects who you hire.
Yeah, I think.
What you want.
We've identified, I think, both here in the public process or here at meetings and, and elsewhere, like part of, I mean, even going way back to the working group, this was pre-COVID. I think part of selecting a consultant is gonna be making sure that we have somebody who can develop clear, you know, visual guidance.
Guidance, that's right.
I think, you know, part of the thought process has been, I don't know that we quite know what we want that pattern book to look like. You know, there's been a lot of disagreement on certain things. But if we can get there, I think, you know, I would want to put the RFPO with the end product to get some updated design guidelines that hit some certain things we all are in agreement on after a little more public input. But I want to leave it broad enough, like, I don't want to smother a consultant's creativity. So we, I think we want to get the proposals and evaluate them. And if somebody's, would take a pattern approach in it, that works for us, then we go with them. But I think, I would like to leave it broad enough so we can see what.
Argue another way.
We can see what they bring us and be like, all right, that sounds like something that's gonna work for us and could be a good fit. I would hate to stick someone into a box of exactly what it has, the ordinance has to. I mean, we know certain components we want it to look like, but the format and stuff like that. And let someone put their best foot forward and us decide what's the right fit. Other questions? Sam, did I miss anything?
I think we should move forward with this design guideline thing as soon as we can because that's the.
Yeah, I think, I mean, and I think it's gonna be a messy process. There's definitely gonna be, I mean, some people think 45 feet is not high enough and we, you know, maybe we should have five story, but then other people are gonna say, what are you, crazy? 25 feet is huge. And I mean, so, I mean, that's just one of.
And you guys have already heard that. Yeah, you guys already heard that.
But that's really in the comp plan, not in the design review guide. If we, if we.
Yes and no, no.
No, it's already in that, the zoning ordinance says you can go three stories up to 45 feet. It used to say 35 feet. No acknowledgement of stories. Design review adds a subjective standard on top of that.
Right, but my point is, if we redo the design review ordinance, let's just say somebody wanted five-story buildings, you couldn't do it in the design review.
It's zoning. Zoning would be the limiting factor today.
Correct. So this is only one, the zoning has to wait. That discussion about, let's say, height is gonna be in the comp plan. This is, once you're building to the envelope.
I'm not sure that's entirely, yeah, I mean, I think there may, we may find as part of updating the design review guideline, the guidelines, that there are certain things in the zoning that might stand in the way of achieving the goals that we identify as part of this process and that we need to change. And maybe we come up against some that we say, we're very comfortable changing because they can be found to be in.
Just change it right then.
Well, we can change it because they're, because we can find them to be compatible with the current comp plan. And there may be other ones where we say, oh, wow, well, we've heard from a lot of people in town. It seems like there's a consensus that this should change, but unfortunately, the current comp plan, I can't think of an example of where that would happen, but theoretically, that's possible.
The way I look at it, you know, we want to get a good ordinance and we don't want to keep amending them on the time. But this is potentially gonna be a big change. We've had an ordinance on the books since the 80s that really hasn't changed a ton other than adding a second district into it. So, I mean, I think we'll update it and then we're probably gonna try it out and then we're probably gonna revisit it. And, you know, during the comp plan process, we could open up that we want something even bigger entirely different. So, you know, I think we're gonna.
That's just part of.
Do a first step and then.
I think we have to move forward.
You're probably gonna talk about it.
See how it works.
And if, we'll make it match the new comp plan.
One thing I will note, just for fun and facts, I guess, for background. So in design review, it really goes from Freeport Crossing down on the Main Street up to Kendall Lane and then it kind of spurs off in there. So in design review, each building has a category based upon its architectural and historical significance. If you're an A building, you're most important. If you're B, you're pretty important. And if you're C, you're probably new or so much changes happened to your building that it's lost its historic value. So as part of previous steps to update this, I would say around 2018, we had a little bit of funding. So we hired a consultant who had experience with historic preservation work. And they looked at all of the A and B buildings in the district and they, they updated like a custom inventory sheet. So like, there's these formal historic inventory sheets if your building's listed on the national register. We took some stuff off of that, but we made this form that was unique to Freeport. So they went around, they took pictures, they looked at all these A and B buildings. They looked at old historical data sheets to get some of the data. And then they looked at them to see, they kind of going away from that A, B, C. And they looked at buildings to say, are they still contributing to the historic and architectural value of downtown Freeport? Or have they been so far altered that they're not? So we did have those, that information inventoried. I think, you know, we'll put that in the RFP. We'll share it. I think there's been a desire probably to move away from the A, B, C. When we had that done, you know, we do have some pockets of Freeport that do have a bunch of structures kind of in close proximity that still have, are contributing to the historic and architectural significance. Kind of like little neighborhood pockets, you know, where they've retained the historic charm, I guess, is the good way to look at it. So we do have that information out there that a consultant could use, however appropriate, once we get to the exact deliverable. Just kind of for background, because I don't know other than Sam who is familiar with that project.
Where is that information?
That information is stored on the server. So when a project comes into project review and they are A and B buildings, we give them those data sheets just so they can see about the building, what's there.
Cool, yeah.
Kind of a reference. If you'd like to come in and look at one for any of your properties, you can if you're A or B. We have them.
I think the, the only other sort of, I guess, question I have about the permitting process or thought maybe is a better way to describe it. I don't think we can talk about permitting or go the whole, have the whole permitting discussion, streamline permitting without talking about enforcement and how these, you know. I, I guess it's coming from me, you know, driving around town and seeing a variety of flagrant violations of the existing design review guidelines. And, you know, I think there's this sort of like personal part of it for me. And I want to be clear, like, I don't really care that much. Like, I'm not gonna rat anybody out. I'm not gonna, like.
Complaint forms are in the hallway. Put your name and address on it.
That's not at all what this is about. But I do think that if we're going to, if we're going to go through this process with the goal of. the goal of making the permitting process user friendly enough that people feel like they can get through it, or maybe they don't even need to go through it for certain, you know, they're incentivized to, to make changes or improvements or, you know, maintain their properties in ways that are, that are sort of in line with what the town wants and, and in keeping with the character that we're trying to promote. What happens if properties are maintained or otherwise, I mean, I guess maintenance is its own category, but are altered in ways that are out of compliance? And how does, like, what, what does that look like? Cause I think right now, and there's a, you know, there's a, there's a capacity, like a staff capacity issue here, like Nick does not have time to go around and sort of, you know, ding people for whatever.
Silence.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, you know, and, and nor should he really, I don't think. I mean, I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that would help the, I don't know. But I think, I think it's just, you know, something that's, that's worth thinking about is how do we think about enforcement and, you know, enforcement of pre-existing violations or enforcement of violations after these things change? And what does that all look like?
Yeah, enforcement will have to be part of it and just, I think, even modernizing that section of the ordinance. I think the other thing, you know, you guys are, most of you are familiar with the ordinance, a couple of you have experienced it firsthand, cause you have homes in the village. I know, I think COVID's changed a lot of stuff. I think as you're driving around, like if you see stuff that we've typically prohibited, it's been there and you like it, or you think we should allow it, or you know, some of those things are good to start to get thinking about as you drive around or things, you know, I think you're right, like signage, when we brought sign ordinance for discussion, we brought four temporary signs because we've banned them, but we could spend all day just writing temporary sign violations, you know, so stuff like that. So if there's stuff that we could bring into conformance that is worth doing that to alleviate some enforcement issues, that might be another thing to look at that way. Oh, I know, I was gonna tell you. So with the site plan review with the new changes, one of the things we've done that kind of leads into what you just said, Sam, is Mary Davis, the president of FDTC, has offered to take that and she's kind of making a big flow chart to show like a process map for how the site plan review process works. So we've taken it for that and then she's gonna put it into other ordinances. But one of the things we've talked about is once we get that base, it does lead to other things. Like if you want to open a business in Freeport, you guys are just one piece of the puzzle. There could be other boards you go to or other pieces of the step or other permitting. So that's something the town's also looking at, kind of putting those, some of our processes in different formats to see if there's ways to more efficiently shuffle stuff around.
Good.
Do you feel like you have enough direction from us?
Yeah, yep.
Any other questions or comments on this?
I think we need to move forward with some of these changes.
We'll go.
All right, item number five, Cecilia, you want to take the lead on this one? This is section 532, accessory apartments, Freeport zoning ordinance. And we're sort of talking about ADUs and ways to reduce barriers to comply with the upcoming rules that we think will be part of LD 2002, three, sorry, 2003.
Sure, so I wasn't aware that the working housing group was also looking at this. I just kind of snuck this in, cause I thought we were gonna have a lot of downtime and a lot of extra time in this meeting. So the reason why I'm bringing this is because Freeport has been way ahead of the curve, because we've allowed ADUs since 2007 and most towns have not. So like the rest of the country is kind of catching up with this. However, we only have had about 55 of them built since then. And of course, we had the housing crisis, I mean, the housing bubble in 2008 soon after, so it's possible that, you know, much of those haven't been built. You know, I personally think that ADUs are a huge part of the affordable housing puzzle that is sort of like a low hanging fruit that we could start to look at, you know, kind of like reexamine our own ordinance and try to identify whether we have things that might be barriers there, or how could we, if the board thinks appropriate, create more incentives for this? And also, although we don't know the status of LD 2003 and whether anything will be changed or not, but there are some things in LD 3003 which we don't have to do too much work because we already had an ADU ordinance, but we will have to update some things because we prohibit, we, we have requirements that will no longer be allowed under that. So if I can, so mostly I just wanted to kind of introduce this topic, give you a little bit of literature on, it's interesting because AARP has been really pushing for the ADUs, I think, for some, you know, good reasons. So they produce this, and there's such a plethora of materials on ADUs nowadays, but I thought this one was a pretty easy to read and simple to understand one. And I'm kind of looking for a little bit of feedback. I can give you a little bit of background information if you want, or if you guys can jump in if you want to.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So this, this is our existing ordinance, Sam?
Yes.
So I'm curious where the 40% comes from, no larger than 40% for the finished, heated portion of a single family home.
Yes.
Because the state statute does not have such a limitation, correct?
The state statute does not have that limitation.
But this has just historically been Freeport's limitation?
Yes, so we can, I can address this question or we can walk through some things and I can get to that, whichever you want. That is, yeah, so that is, that was very common for towns to, I mean, if you think about it.
Incremental approach of like, yeah, we don't want the ADU to be like a 6,000 square foot mansion.
Exactly, so, you know, I think once, you know, ADUs are kind of like that step so that you can stick with your single family zoning ordinance, right? But you could still have this kind of, you know, a little bit of flexibility and.
Unless the main house is a 20,000 square foot mansion.
Right, in which case.
And it would fit right in.
Yeah, right, well, then 40% wouldn't be an issue.
Right, exactly.
Right, so, so the 40% was kind of, you know, throughout the country, when they started to introduce that, it was kind of like, well, let's, let's, you know, let's make sure we're not allowing them to be basically a second unit, you know, because that's not the purpose of them. A lot of people call ADUs as the gateway trucks to multi-family housing. So, so the, the 40%, I think that's where it was, but it was actually when we had the comprehensive plan in 2011, I believe, and I didn't do more ordinance research to see which version of this one we had in 2007 before. Because there has been amendments to this, but before that, I think it might have been 800 feet. But as you can see, I don't know if I can share my screen with the public.
Is it the case that all of this will come up for review and amendment?
Right, right, so I'm kind of introducing some things, sort of to ask you. Say if LD 2003 falls through the cracks for our community, because there's some talk about maybe it wouldn't apply for communities with over 10,000 people, that it would only apply to communities, we don't know if that's gonna happen or not. But regardless of the status of LD 2003, is this board or the town council interested in, in reducing some barriers that are included with 2000, LD 2003, regardless of whether it goes through or not?
Are these the barriers?
We can go over a few of them and I don't know why.
Well, for example, the 40% would be one potential barrier, so. So I have a couple of questions that might be legal in nature, so I don't know if you want to answer.
Do we have Cecilia do her?
We can.
Yeah, and then we'll get to the legal questions after, does that make sense?
Yeah, that's fine.
And hopefully you'll be able to answer some of the legal questions. I don't know if they're able to see my sharing my screen.
Are you screen sharing them?
Oh, there you go, there you go.
Looks like you are.
So. I think it's up there.
It's up there.
No, that's the cable.
Oh, that's the cable.
And this is what I wanted.
No, but you're trying to get it so Zoom can see. Did you do the bottom screen sharing Zoom?
I don't think I have to do that, but do I?
Tom can get it on TV if you want to do it this way.
Oh, sure, I can also share it on Zoom.
Either way, you can do it, you can get it.
Okay, so is it up there? I guess that's the important.
You don't need a screen share.
You're gonna film it?
We're gonna send this out to you.
They're gonna film it, Cecilia, right?
All right, so.
Responsive IT department right there.
Just need a console in the back of the room, it'd be easier for them.
Probably.
So as I shared with, here with this, you know, maybe the ABCs of ADUs, you know, there are a lot of benefits for ADUs for aging in place. It allows accommodations for caretakers, it allows accommodations for multi-generational households. And also it might become like the retirement income that some seniors might need so that they can continue to live in our community. Oops, so, and that's kind of why AARP, they have tremendous amount of resources and I, if you're, if you're interested in this topic and you want to learn more about it, I can share the links for you, or I can set you up with, they have a lot of videos too that you can watch that goes into the regulations and the barriers as well. So there are some town benefits to the ADUs regardless of LD 2003 and state requirements. You know, because they're smaller, they increase that density without altering that character of the neighborhood, so it's a little bit easier on the community and community impacts. It will, would, they increase the affordable housing stock because they're usually smaller. And there's also this energy efficiency aspect of it, which is actually quite tremendous because you're creating a unit that's usually much smaller, so they're usually, you know, much more energy efficient. But there are some of these regulatory barriers, so just the wastewater requirements that they have to meet, and they will have to continue to meet those under LD 2003. And these are like common regulatory barriers, they're not even so specific to Freeport. They're just very common identified amongst the people who study this. Requiring off-street parking, which we do require, that's also a barrier. Not allowing the detached ADUs. Right now, we do have a provision that has to do with the 50 feet and whether they're existing or not.
Wait, wait, I want to find it.
Where's it, they can't be more than 50?
More than 50 feet.
That are greater than 50 feet, which is a big barrier.
Right, basically you can't shove a little thing way off so you don't have to think about it and then rent it out.
Yeah, there's also the requirement for the owner to live on site. That's usually a very common requirement, but it is also a barrier. Because sometimes, you know, people want to have that flexibility and they might not be able to rely on being there all the time or not.
So what happens if it's built and then the owner decides to move away?
So it's actually, the academy's accord officer said that it sucks, it's like almost unenforceable.
That's a big one for me personally in thinking through my house, you know, because we have an attached barn that's, well, it's a very small barn, but, you know, it could conceivably be an ADU, but we don't necessarily plan to live in the house for the next 20 years, so.
Right, so it's like, how will you get alone if you don't know?
And do we want to invest in that, or should we just not, you know, save the money for a down payment on something else and leave the house behind altogether? Anyway, it.
It can, yeah, so it can be a big barrier for a lot of people. So in Portland, they actually even require that you put that on your deed. I don't know if they've been updating it recently, but Portland finally allows ADUs throughout the town, but.
Put one on the deed.
But you have, put that, there's an owner occupancy requirement.
Okay.
So I'm like, okay, great, so now you have to hire a lawyer.
Or does it have to be in the one?
I think it can be either one or the other.
The way it's written, it makes it seem like you, like the, the one that the owner occupies does not necessarily have to be a primary residence, which is further complicates it because then theoretically, like what, I mean, so you could occupy it, but it, maybe it's not your primary residence and then what, you put it on Airbnb like two thirds of the time, I mean, it's just a very gray.
Or you live in Florida on the one.
Right, exactly, yeah, yeah. And then rent it, so it's, there's a lot, it's, it's a gray area.
And that's a policy decision for, for, for you and the town. And the other one is the, you know, design requirements, which can sometimes be a barrier, but maybe we want them. We have design requirements, the size requirements that, that, that's that 40% or, you know, some towns have different ones. And then also, of course, the permit and the development fees. So, moving on, you know, with some of these barriers, the required off-street parking that's like no longer going to be allowed under 2000, LD 2003, not allowing the detached, that's also gonna most likely have to be removed. But requiring owners to live on site, that's still an option for Freeport. The design requirements is still an option, the size requirements are still an option, you know, the permit and development fees is still an option. Some places that are trying to really push for ADUs, they might actually waive the permit and development fees as a way of incentivizing affordable housing.
Would it be a flat fee or a waived fee?
I think it's like a waived fees in some towns. Some towns even have, I think, maybe Texas might have been one of the first one that I'm aware, a town there that they even have like pre-designed ones and LA has them now too. So it's almost like you go to, you pick between this, this pattern, you choose one and it's already, the town will be like, okay, you want this one, all right. They stamp it on, so it's a, you know, different cities, especially, there's a recipe for, for ADUs and it's usually has to tie in when, when you have a shortage of housing and when it's very expensive to get new housing. And that's when oftentimes you will see a higher demand for it. Moving on to what Lain was pointing out about the size restriction and how that can be a barrier. So when you look at this drawing, you can see that with the 40%, what happens if you have a small house and you want to have, you know, an interior lower level or an interior upper level? And that's pretty much the footprint of your house, like it can create, you know, issues for people who just want to do an ADU on their basement or in their attic, but now they have to figure out how to do that 40% calculation, which might not really work out well, or it might be even, you know, like kind of a hindrance.
So how, how do they scale it to get around that? They scale it no larger than the existing residence or?
So our current language says.
Says 40%.
Yes, yep.
So what, what would be the alternative?
The alternative would be for, for there to be a policy if you think that there should be a size restriction, it could be, you know, you could find a way, like it's 40% unless you have an existing garage barn, or unless it's a basement or attic. Or you could just put a flat rate and say 800 square feet, 1,000 square feet, you know, and, but then if you say 800 or whatever square feet, you might create issues for people with basements and attics trying to do that, or with an existing building.
I'm currently really interested in this because there's a group that was helping relocate the New Mainers who were evicted from the Best Western in Freeport. And there was two ADUs identified within Freeport that the owners of them wanted to rent to the New Mainer families, but could not because they didn't pass code. One was due to the 50-foot restriction and the other was due to parking.
Interesting.
And so they, they couldn't do it.
So they're existing ADUs?
Existing ADUs, but they had been used previously for just like visitors-in-laws, but when they went to try to, not when they went to try to rent it out, and because these folks are still waiting for the work permits, they had to go to general assistance, they couldn't, it legally could not be done. So it was a huge, a huge loss.
You know, my garage is 75 feet from the house. I can't put one above my garage.
Yeah.
You know, I mean.
Yeah, so.
Add 25 feet to the garage to get it closer to the house, so.
So we could wait.
Pull it over, you know.
Put a wall out there.
So we could wait for LD 2003 to pass and make, you know, and then the state says that we can't have that parking and that 50 feet requirement.
Why don't we just move forward on it?
I mean, especially if you're talking about affordable housing, it's like, this is a no-brainer. I mean, I'm not saying let it go, nothing, but it's definitely, some of these restrictions are, I mean, even the no less than 320 square feet with like the big momentum towards tiny homes and.
Just looking at that and thinking, a tiny house is smaller than that and that is an ADU.
There's very low hanging fruit here, that I think.
If you can fit the utilities in it and a bedroom and a kitchenette and you got a bathroom, what difference it make?
And there's a whole, I mean, there's a whole code now for tiny houses with, you know, things that don't fly in, I don't even know what the opposite of a, a regular house, I guess, you know, like a sleeping loft, you can't build in a regular house because it doesn't have proper egress, but in a tiny house you can do. I mean, I don't know what the legality of incorporating some of those. I don't know what the legality of incorporating some of those standards into an ADU is.
Well, if it's a, yeah, if it's a detached ADU and it's built like a tiny home to a tiny home standard, then under LD 2003, that, I don't want to have, give the wrong information, but the LD 2003 says that it needs to be a minimum of 195 square feet, but that's because our building codes say that that's the minimum, you know, that's like the state.
That's pretty small.
But the state LD 2003 says that. If they, it is very small. If they, if they update the building codes and that could change too.
Yeah.
It's currently the law, it's not LD anymore, right? The governor signed it and it's the law.
It goes into effect in July 1st.
Okay, but it, but it has passed and signed by the governor.
But there's still rulemaking to be done on it.
There's still some rulemaking to be done, so we're unsure.
Can I ask one other question about 2003, which is, I thought, I think ADUs are great, but I thought that 2003 seems to permit three ADUs. And that was the part that made me very nervous.
So, yeah, I, I don't think that's part of the, the ADU, that's for something else. That's the, so we have the.
It's all just part of 2003, but not part of their ADU standard.
Yeah, so, so the, 2003 has these four different components, you know, there's the Fair Housing Act that, you know, we need to be complying with that or the main one, that I, I really don't really know much about that one. And then there's affordable housing density bonus and then there's that residential areas generally up to four dwelling units allowed, but that's something that also, that's a little different than the.
That's the one that struck me is it was really messing with our zoning.
Does that supersede like a land per dwelling area?
My understanding is that no. That's not the ADU. So for the ADU, there is no land per dwelling and there can't be any. We already meet that requirement because we don't require that, but the state is gonna make it so that other towns can't require it. And the other thing about the LD 2003 is that it, if you have a duplex, you can't, it, it doesn't apply to that. For the ADU specifically on the LD 2003.
What's the deal with the four that you?
Right, that's the.
I want to make sure my next-door neighbor doesn't become a four-family house.
Come on.
Well.
I mean, you know, I'm all for affordable housing, but that seems not right.
Yeah, for single-family houses.
Might be four.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking and they have a pretty big place with a lot of separate entrances, like I think they could do it.
So I don't really want to get into the other parts of LD 2003. My understanding is that, I almost call it like the state passed this bill, but there's almost like a, a poison pill, which is the municipalities can keep their density requirements, they just can't be higher than for the single-family home. Believe it or not, we have some much more, let's say progressive zoning ordinance that we've had in place for a long time, but when you start looking around throughout the country or even in Maine, there's, there's crazy ordinances out there, including, you know, not being allowed to have wildflowers in your front lawn, you know, there's, and it gets into some.
Stuff that you think of as homeowners associations, but.
Right.
But town, yeah, but part of the zoning, yeah.
And thank you for reminding me of that. So the other thing with the, with the LD 2003 and even without it is that subdivision would still apply and, which we're trying to get a little bit of feedback from legal guidance and the rulemaking, what, how would that affect that, but if there is a homeowner, it's like a covenant restriction that would still apply. So a lot of folks that have, you know, they're gonna have a lot of impediments in your own land, say if you're not connected to public water and sewer and you need to update your, your wastewater disposal system, that's gonna be a huge cost and maybe, you know, an impediment for a lot of homeowners in Freeport to do that.
So you're saying that like, you know, a neighborhood could also say like LD 2003 is great, but you still can't have an ADU in our neighborhood?
If it's part of their deed.
If they're in a homeowners association.
Well, it doesn't have to be home, I mean, I have a restrictive covenant in my deed, but I'm not in a homeowners association.
Right, could be a restricted covenant.
Yeah, deed, deed covenant.
But that's one, that was one of my legal questions, actually. If, if Freeport wanted to, could it pass an ordinance that would supersede those private covenants?
Ooh, I don't know the answer to that.
I think that'd be hard to do.
I guess it's a legal question.
Yeah, those are, those are private documents.
Actually, I don't know if they could, because with the state here, with the LD 2003, it says restrictive covenants may not, the section may not be construed to interfere with or abrogate or null the value.
Yeah, where the state is not interfering with those, I was wondering if the town could.
I don't know.
That's not my understanding, because those are private documents between private individuals. The LD 2003, they, they came out with the statute and then we got some original guidance from DECD and a lot of it said to be determined in rulemaking, to be determined in rulemaking. So we just got the draft of the rulemaking, we had a meeting with the town attorney to get some high-level legal advice, there was a lot of holes in some of the information. The draft rulemaking, it's online, it came out, I think, February 8th. The state had a public hearing on the draft rulemaking today, it does appear that they already have a recording of that public hearing online. The public comment period is open through the 13th and then once that closes, the Department of Economic and Community Development will need to address all of the written comment that they received. And so I'm not sure on the timeline on the final rulemaking. I talked to the town attorney today, they had someone that went in and listened to the rulemaking, a lot of the comments were on the timing and the implementation and whether or not having municipalities implement it by July 1 is reasonable, but I think by the ti, hopefully by the time we come back to you next month, we'll have more information. There are some things in LD 2003 that pertain to accessory dwelling units that kind of get me worked up because they interfere with how we've been doing things and actually would make a couple components more restrictive. I do want to make note Mitch's point, you brought up something really good. We're talking about the accessory dwelling units, which is just one portion of them, but you're right, there is that bigger portion where in certain cases vacant lots might be able to get four units or existing homes might be able to get three units. So we are looking at potential for a bunch of different housing types to pop up in a lot of different locations.
Bad for single-family residential neighborhoods.
Yeah, I think, it, it could lead to a lot of change in parts of Freeport. On the ADU, there's some unknowns with how it pertains to subdivision and then there's still some holes in the affordable housing density bonuses on the LD 2013, which is why we can't really answer a lot of your questions because that rulemaking is so important. But any questions you, that come to your mind on any of this, even your legal questions, they're really good for us to hear and note because we are still working with the town attorney and going to another seminar on LD 2003 where we are going to be able to ask some questions. So if there's anything else jumping out here at you, it's good for us to hear that.
Well, my other question was related to the 40% limitation. So that's kind of the reverse of the restrictive covenant question where the state statute doesn't interfere, I mean, does interfere with, you know, with, with, you know, the, the accessory dwelling unit rules. In this case, the state does not require something like a 40% limitation and does that, the legal question is, does that mean the town can still do the 40% or does that mean the town is preempted from doing the 40%?
No, the town can still do the 40%. We can have a maximum size, but, so.
Can't have a maximum?
You can, yeah.
You can have a maximum size, you can still have zoning, you know.
It doesn't have, so you can't have like setbacks that are more restrictive to the single-family home and if the ADU was to be built in an accessory structure that exists prior to July 1st, then say your garage, right, you would be able to put an ADU there even though it doesn't meet the setback requirement. So for those existing structures prior to July 1st, 2023, build your garages, you know, it, it could just meet that, the, the setbacks for that accessory structure.
It could potentially, I think, trigger the need for us to look at some other sections of the ordinance because we call them accessory apartments today, but they're accessories. So the primary use in Freeport when you have these is a single-family home. When you have an accessory use, as we talked about with parking, you know it's supposed to be kind of subordinate and incidental, so you don't usually have two principal uses that are equal in size and use intensity, one's smaller than the other. So if that's something that the board wants to look at removing, I think we might need to do some, which is fine, it's like, as you said, it's a policy decision, we might need to do some cross-references with some definitions and other sections to make sure we don't create conflicts.
So, you know, I would be looking if you want to move this forward or if you want to keep us looking at this, I would want some direction on, you know, whether these things that are optional for us, right, that we have to get rid of the parking requirements. We'll have to get rid of, you know.
50 foot.
The 50 feet for those existing structures. There are some issues with the state that I still really don't know the status, which will be the shoreline zone one that, you know, you still have to confirm what shoreline zoning requirements, but I don't know how that will relate with the public water and sewer, because that's the only zoning that we allow housing that we put a cap on the accessory dwelling is that right now they have to be connected to water and sewer in Freeport for us to allow this, and I don't think we'll still be able to do that. All of these places will have to meet the state of Maine subsurface, you know, wastewater and that's a good thing, we don't want accessory dwellings to go on in a way that would pollute our environment. So the policy decisions would be that section six of section 532 of the accessory apartments to look at, you know, whether you want to keep it at this 40% finished of the proportion of the house or if you want to pick, you know, a number, one of them, you can watch those webinars and, and read through, you know, more informational materials and see if you find a number that you feel comfortable and just put a cap on say 1,000 if it's a new structure, but if you're using, reutilizing an existing structure, then we don't care. You have to think about from an energy or climate-related aspect is that if you are converting a basement or an attic, that's actually the most, one, affordable thing to do and two, most energy-efficient thing to do if you're converting a portion of, it doesn't even need to be a basement or like I say, a portion of your house. You know, you're basically creating two units, but you're using half, you know, or, or you're not utilizing as much energy to heat and fuel because it's another unit.
Right, I mean, I think there's a, yeah, the, the obvious one is envelope change, like if you're not changing the envelope of the house, we don't care how big the ADU is.
That's right.
That seems right.
Or any structure on the property.
Right, yeah, fair enough, yep.
The other policy decision for you to do would be, and I still, like, like I said, we would still need to discuss this with the town attorney, but my understanding is that the state doesn't care if, if we still have a requirement that it must be, you know, owner, it must be like occupied by the owner. So that's a policy decision for you. There's always a lot of.
Interesting one, because that could, yep.
There's always a lot of, you know, a hot topic in ADUs is that, oh, people are gonna build them and they're gonna become.
Is it two-family, is it, is it, is it two-family zoning or is it an ADU? You know, that's the question.
Right, so you could have the size limitation to keep it small.
So let me ask this question, if I own a duplex, I live in one half and I have a barn, can I put an ADU in the barn because I live in half the duplex?
Not today.
No.
And not under that LD 2003.
It doesn't require it, but can he, may he?
No, it, it has to be a single family.
It has to be a single family.
You know, the other thing, talking to the code officer, we've been looking at the LD 2003 and as we add on units to units and make these bigger, we've, like Cecilia said, Freeport's been pretty lenient in the way we're permitting these accessory apartments. They're been treated smaller, they've been owner-occupied, so I think we've been pretty flexible with separate meters and utilities and separation and when you get into that bigger level of going towards duplex, you do also trigger some different code things, so I think whatever you guys decide, we would want to run it by the code officer to see what kind of other can of worms were.
Does it say in there which one the owner has to live in?
No.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, there's, yeah, the, the difference between permitting an accessory apartment, isn't there something about a kitchen, like you can't have a full kitchen?
Oh, you're talking about like in the, certain parts of Freeport, if you want to put living space but not triggering a unit, people often leave out the kitchen.
Yeah.
Which could be some of what Anna's, like examples were too, if you can't get the full apartment, you'd put in a bathroom and a bedroom and someone could stay there, but you don't have the three components that you need for a full unit.
Well, an ADU needs to have a kitchen. If you don't have a kitchen, then you're just like an outside bedroom.
Just an extra bedroom.
Yeah, yeah, no.
But I think the, yeah, the, trying to keep, trying to keep these possible without triggering utility upgrades, like firewall separation, I mean, those, those are the things.
Firewall separation.
Firewall, I mean, that, that's a whole.
That's where the duplex, I mean.
Right, exactly, that's what I'm saying, like if, if, it's so much more complicated.
You do have to update your septic too to be designed for an apartment already, like Cecilia said, it's not just adding a bedroom, you're actually going to have to upgrade the septic as well.
Yeah, my understanding from the code officer is that you don't have to, like, if you're converting your attic into an ADU, you're not gonna have to sprinkle it if your existing house doesn't have it and it's a conversion. That was my understanding for them.
Like the, the way it's written currently where it's been clearly incidental and not at equal dwelling, it hasn't approached that duplex.
But it should continue to be incidental and not, you know, like, it is two apartments, but it is, you know, like the difference between the ADU and a, and a condominium is that you can't sell one off, you know, it's, it is, there are attached, but we do have a, like a physical, it's kind of like we're regulating what goes on in there, right? Like if the owner needs to occupy in order for somebody to build them, I mean, then it, what happens if the owner needs to move for work for a certain period of time or something like that?
Or sells the property?
Or sells the property, then the person who buys it.
Locked into that same.
Yeah, so.
Well, he doesn't have to rent it out, right?
Right, but then you have this.
You can't rent both, you can't buy it as an income property and rent both of them out.
Yeah, I know.
Right.
I mean, if the guy moves away for work, as long as there's nobody, as long as it's short-term, I don't see what difference it make, you know? I just don't think he should turn into an apartment.
If you've got a renter that's already there.
Yeah, I don't think he should turn into an apartment house, that's all.
Today you couldn't, but if you remove that owner occupied.
Then you can, yeah, so no, that's an interesting one.
It becomes an apartment house.
I think.
And the other policy one that, just before you move forward, I just want to point out these three things that I think are very clearly like policy ones, that are not state ones, is, and this is very, I, I don't know, you know, what's the best answer to this, but, so if you look on the second page, you know, it's talking about the, this is kind of what I'm gonna call like the, the design requirements of it. It says that the separate entrance for the accessory apartment may be created but should be clearly secondary to the main entrance, such as a setback further from the road and the primary entrance. Sometimes with existing buildings or say like your garages, you know, like sometimes these kind of requirements might not work with, with existing buildings, so I don't know if you think that is so important that we should have that there or if you think that we should just be more flexible to be more accommodating.
How would we be able to learn the, the possible consequences of an error here, of a?
A lot of it's in this document. I mean, they talked about entrances and how, especially for older people, which a lot of babies are built for, so, I mean, maybe if, I was just reading some of it a little bit when you guys were talking, I think there's agreement that we, we think that this needs to be taken a look at and in general maybe made more flexible accommodations. Lots to figure out about how flexible, but.
If we want to like work with maybe the housing group and, you know, if you want to discuss this, you know, go over this docu, this ARP resources and maybe the ones online as well, it's, it's full of, they're easy to watch, there's like a couple of videos, you know, and it.
I think we're gonna be, all be inclined to be lenient, that's the, as you said, to be flexible, but I'm trying to have my, you know, risk management side on and say, you know, but we could turn it into everything's a duplex and it might not, we might not get what we think we're gonna get.
So what if you had?
Today we only have 55, that's pretty interesting.
And I mean, I think it's sort of similar to what we just dealt with with cannabis, it's like, okay, we're gonna take an incremental approach, you know, well, we can read the resources, but.
I mean, the, the septic one, I think is interesting too, that's gonna, that's, that's a huge barrier. I mean, if you ever redo your septic system.
But there's nothing we can do about that one.
Which is fine, and I think it's good, but I think, I think it, that's a, that's a limiting, that is going to push the vast majority of these into areas that are served by public water and sewer, because it's like, it's no big deal for, if you live in the village, to. Because it's like, it's no big deal for, if you live in the village, to just hook up your ADU or, you know, plum another bathroom or whatever.
If somebody's building a whole separate structure, you know, adding the, you know, increasing the septic may not be that big an additional investment.
Oh, it could be.
Yeah, it's true, but it's, I mean, but it's, I mean, you-
A new, you know, new- New building, it wouldn't be that big a deal.
But it's still, you know, it's probably ten grand.
So you build a house and you're building apartment above the garage while you do it?
So what's the next step?
Size, upsize your septic, but, yeah.
It would just be some direction on what you want to do with the policy, the, these three policy things. It's interesting, I just thought of this right now. And so, for instance, in, I believe Cape Cod, they are looking at new technologies for, you know, waste water treatment and, you know, there are new technologies with compostable toilets that could probably make these even more, like easier for a lot of, but we, we don't need to go there. But that's just, you know, if we find maybe down the road that a lot of people, maybe, you know, seniors that are trying to age in place and can't afford to, don't have room to like redo their whole septic system, that maybe we could accommodate and be like, hey, we're okay with it. But I don't know, that would be also a question to the code officer and the state of Maine. I know Massachusetts might be different, but-
Yeah, I think the questions for me about the process of how to deal with this, or the concerns, I should say, because in general, I totally agree with what I sense to be the direction of the board, that there's a, you know, there's an appetite for lowering barriers to building these. And, you know, yeah, I thi, I think it's great. What I, what I want to be careful of is, A, that we don't get out in front of the rulemaking of LD two thousand and three. So what's the timeline on that, do we know?
Are you trying, sorry?
Well, I just don't want to like, I don't want to have, I don't want to spend our time discussing things that then the state says, actually, you can't do that.
I think the things Cecilia's pointed out to you are things that are-
They're not going to change.
Regardless, they're all on the table that you can discuss.
Okay.
I think-
Yeah, I guess that's my question, is there's no chance then that the state's going to say like, oh, actually, you can't?
Well, there's still a level of unknown, but I think the things she flagged based upon conversations with the attorney, our reading of the D E C D handouts and the initial round of rulemaking, we think there are things that are all on the table. If anything, I think the rulemaking could require you to have to change some additional things in the way we treat these. Like, one of the concerns flagged by our attorney that they still didn't clear in rulemaking is that the way it's written and one, it raises a question as to whether or not these are counted as a dwelling unit. So Freeport's never acknowledged them as a dwelling unit because they were secondary and incidental. The place that dwelling units kind of become important is in subdivision. Because with all this LD two thousand and three, they haven't changed subdivision laws. So you can't create three or more units within a five-year period or you're going to trigger subdivision and have to go through that. So for example, that's one thing that in the draft rulemaking, it still isn't clear. We're waiting for the public comment period to open up to see if we get additional guidance. Depending on that decision, we might have to bring forward some additional changes that you may or may not like, but we're going to have to change them. That, that's just an example. So I think if you want to give her a little more guidance on how big you want to push size or if there's other stuff you want to see or more stuff you want to talk about, I think the rulemaking's close enough around the corner that I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say go to public hearing next month because going to public hearing on this and then having to go to public hearing a month or two later makes no sense. And then I think also having, if the housing committee wants to give any additional feedback, you know, I think that could be something to hear. I don't know if that's something you guys would want to talk about next month or-
This is just an introduction.
Yeah.
Because we were, didn't have much to add to the agenda, so it was just kind of like putting it out there.
It's coming, and I think, like Cecilia said, even if LD two thousand and three gets delayed, I think you could make some pieces of this go forward. You could also incorporate some pieces of LD two thousand and three, even if you don't have to do them by July one, you know? You could check off the accessory dwelling because you could have that part done. And then we could talk about affordable housing and how many, how many houses Mitch's neighbor can put up, you know, stuff like that. So there's going to be plenty to talk about.
As long as they're all in harmony. I thought Mitch, after your comments, would appreciate that line, you know?
So it sounds like you're, you're looking for high level direction at this point, right?
Yeah, that, that's what Cecilia's looking for.
So I just, I just want to say for myself, and it sounds like there's probably some similar sentiment among board members, I would like to see as many obstacles removed as possible because we have, we do have an affordable housing crisis. And I think that should be the, the guiding principle here.
So, exactly the same comment, I'm wondering what, what's the list of all the things that, you know, would be the progressive answer that we haven't, that we haven't done? And then we should consider, are we going too far before we-
Yeah, I mean, it's parking, it's the, within the distance, within the-
So we can whack the fifty feet?
Single family dwelling, the size.
Whack the forty percent too?
Yep.
Yeah, those are the biggest ones.
And I wouldn't even be ready to-
If you whack it completely, you're going to create two families zone.
Right, which we'll get to that part, but we're just, yeah.
Yeah, but what's the list of things to look at?
Yeah, sure. And, and the entrance.
And, and the other question is, why, if somebody on, in shoreline zoning can have enough sewage on their lot to put a, put an ADU in, what is, or why do we want to restrict them to public sewer?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a-
That's actually a pretty important question because I wouldn't even actually be able to, I wouldn't even feel comfortable bringing this forward to you next month or in the next couple of months because I would still need legal guidance on what to do.
Well, I think that's a good, because the other comment that I, or the other thing that I really want to keep in mind is, you know, there's the capacity of the board to spend meeting time looking at this and we may well have that capacity. But I, what I really don't want to do is spend staff time looking at something if it's cutting the other priorities in line that we've identified. And so that, to me, is a big, a big concern. You know, I, I think this is, this stuff is great, but I definitely want to make sure the focus stays on the, you know, the RFPs and-
Honestly, Sam, we have to be looking at LD two thousand and three. We're spending time looking at it already, we're already in this section. You know, Cecilia's been the one that's been taking this and going through this. So I, right now, I feel like if you guys want her to look at some more stuff in here, regardless of LD two thousand and three, we have time right now. If you wait two months, I'm going to give you a different answer.
Okay.
And then the septic or the shoreline zone thing, that's also an unknown in LD two thousand and three because technically, one of the issues raised is if in the shoreline zone, the accessory dwelling unit has to meet the minimum lot area in the shoreline zone. If the guidance is that it does, that's going to be another limiting factor that's beyond all of us.
Why don't we just start with the low hanging fruit?
Yeah, yeah, we got three we want to whack out, we have the forty foot, we have the forty percent, we got the fifty feet, and we got parking.
So can we put those on the agenda for next month then to have a more in-depth discussion on them?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, if it, if we're getting-
I'll sign Cecilia up for that, yeah, and I think she could also talk to Nick about some of code, like, how far can we push the size limit? Like when, at what point do you see realistically there being a-
A problem?
Yeah. A concern, a concern, and it really comes down to like a safety concern. And now if we are going to take away the owner occupied requirement potentially, now you have two separate people habitating in their units with-
I'm less inclined to go to the owner occupancy thing because that seems like less of a gradual approach than some of these lower things, but we can get into that next time.
I think it should be owner occupied, don't you?
I do, that's what I'm saying, I think to remove that would be kind of going a little bit too far.
So I think that's something you could talk about next time and maybe Cecilia could find out. Hey, code guide, what happens if we go owner occupied or not owner occupied? Like what are some-
I don't think that would make a difference in terms of like building code, code. It, it's just a really a policy decision, but it is kind of like the code officer said, it's really not enforceable. But it might create a barrier to certain people, like, like Sam said, you know, like, or maybe if you're trying to get a loan to build one. There's like definitely different thoughts, schools of thoughts in, in the owner occupancy and the size restrictions throughout the country, right? So with the fear with the short-term rentals, I just want to flat out, you know, put this on the bucket of, if you have concerns about short-term rentals, you should address this in the short-term rental ordinance, not in the zoning. Some of the lines of thoughts is that, you know, there's this fairness aspect of it and if you're not, if you don't make it, if you can build a single-family home and not restrict it to be owner occupied, why are you making it be owner occupied to accessory dwelling? There's another economist from the Hamilton, I think she's with Brookings now, who, she, I used to lean that way too, but she explained that you might just want to remove these barriers so that people will build them, even if it is for a short-term rental, because at the end of the game, you increase the supply, right? But that person, maybe that's what some people, that, maybe that's what it'll take for that person to build that, but maybe eventually it will become a long-term rental, maybe temporarily, it's short-term. And in studies, and if you walk through those guidelines and webinars they have on ARP, you know, they were talking about some of the studies they've done and towns that have done this on the West Coast for a while, they have found that most of them actually are owner occupied. So, because a lot of people, actually today I had somebody came in and, I don't think she's at the, let me escape from this, make sure I check out on the republic, but there was somebody who came in and that's exactly what she wanted to do. She wanted to build an accessory dwelling so that she can have her daughter move into her place and she and her husband live on the accessory dwelling and, you know, it's-
There's a bunch of companies in Maine, construction companies that are, have been more traditional construction companies in the past that are moving toward modular, you know, panelized or fully modular ADUs with a, you know, specific eye toward like, we build this thing in a factory and we deliver it to you and it's a lower cost alternative to building it stick by stick in your backyard, so.
Sam, I just wanted to suggest to you, you know, these are some high-level ideas, but these could be some things that you talk to the council about at your workshop, just to feel out and get some input. It might give you some good directive, like, hey, we talked about originally, we're looking at size, we're looking at owner occupied, you know, see if they have any directive, because that would be before your next week meeting. So, you know, if you do that, you could bring that back. Mitch could bring back any input if the housing committee has it. And I think you could have a good discussion also with the information that Cecilia brings back.
And I think we also can talk to them about the, the direction on permitting, the additional budget requests that you mentioned earlier.
Yep, yeah, we can coordinate a number. Actually, they'll have seen that before you get to them. They're going to see that budget request on March seventh, I believe.
I think one of the other things we should talk about this is, is, do we, do we have a lesser, I mean, what's the fee structure? We should look at the fee structure with doing one of these.
Is that, that may not be up to us.
Yes, up to council.
Could they send a recommendation on it? That's another thing to that.
I'd be curious what the fee structure is to build one of these, that's all.
So the-
How does that affect getting one done?
So the fee structure, septic permit, electrical, plumbing, I don't know that you could fully waive plumbing because that's kind of mandated by the state, we have an additional fee on top. The building permit fee would be by the square footage, if they go a thousand square feet or greater, they are going to trigger impact fees. I think it's a case where if you wanted to, your job is to do the zoning portion of it, but I think you can always offer up your opinion on other things, like, hey, well, just so you know, one of the things we talked about and, uh, something that could get in the way would be fees, that might be something you want to talk about. I think you could flag it when you make the motion or recommendation.
Maybe the impact fee.
Yeah, that's a prime.
Well, thousand feet could also be kind of big for an ADU unless maybe it's on an existing structure that it's not affecting. Like a thousand feet could be pretty big-
Yeah.
For an ADU, so maybe-
If they're not, if they're putting it in the existing structure that's already been built, they're not going to trigger the impact fee.
Twelve hundred foot house with a twelve hundred foot basement.
Right, yes, I'm saying like unless it's on an existing structure. But then if you're getting like building permits for an existing basement, you know, it, no, actually it wouldn't be smaller.
The basement can be a challenge because there's strict egress requirement. So I could see us potentially having less in the basement, they'd have to have that direct egress. You know, the other thing with fees is they are to cover the code officer's time. These things are still going to need permits and they're still going to need to be built to code and they're still going to need to be inspected.
We're saying, yeah, like the impact fee, you know, if this, that's something we might be able to, you know, it's already an existing structure, if it's an existing structure, there's really no impact except-
Well, there's no impact.
They wouldn't trigger it in an existing structure, it's when they're building a new structure for it, a detached or a new structure.
But maybe you wouldn't want to detach a structure that's over a thousand square feet.
It's not that big.
It depends on, on your property, it's not. Yeah, on my neighbor's property, it would be.
My property would be bigger than my house.
If you had, if you had the size of a two-car garage and, you know, they had a, an upstairs and a downstairs in a two-car garage, that's over a thousand square feet.
That's right.
I think one other thing, Cecilia, I'm going to look to you for guidance on this, they didn't talk about, we have a bedroom limitation. I don't know if you're going to be able to limit bedrooms under LD two thousand and three.
It's silent on that.
So I don't know if that's something you guys want to also look at, I don't know if you research that much.
Right now it's one or two?
I believe it's one right now.
It's one, right?
One bedroom.
Yep, here.
But there's no Murphy bed restriction, so you can have one bedroom and like thirteen Murphy drawers.
You know, we have an office.
Curtains.
Yeah, just, it was just one other thought.
There's no closet, it's not a bedroom.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
So we got three things we can move forward on this.
Yeah, and I think, I think we have a good, I think we have a good direction. So if Mitch talks to the housing task force about this and we talk to the council about this at the workshop and then come back and we can be, before Caroline's, did you say two-month deadline before you're going to tell us we can't talk about it? Or we can't take staff time?
Part of that depends on the LD two thousand and three.
Yep, fair enough. Great, so I think we have, I think we have good direction. So item number six is a review of the planning board's twenty twenty-three schedule.
I do have some bad news. We, I was not able to find that next Tuesday or surrounding date on July fifth. So I don't know if you would want to cancel July fifth or just stay with it or do a TBD for that. It's the day after the fourth of July.
So what, no kidding? I mean, the, the holidays are going to be Monday and Tuesday that weekend, we'll be back to work on Wednesday.
I'm planning on being here, I'm taking my vacation next, in the end of this month, so.
I would discourage, if you have a meeting, I would just discourage you from holding a big public hearing on that day.
Oh, right, sure.
You can keep it on the calendar, right?
Are we supposed to tell you now if we can't make a meeting?
If you want to, if, if you know in advance, that'd be great.
Okay. I know I won't be able to make August second.
Okay.
You guys can change the schedule, it's just really, we like to post them online, so it's really helpful. And if you tell us you can't make it a day and we know it happens, we can try to reschedule. And just be aware, we're probably going to add to this.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have, I mean, I guess I don't have any specific issue with meeting on the fifth.
So Wednesday?
Right. Yep.
Okay, and then as far as the, sorry, I couldn't, I don't know if I caught the decision on the workshop with the council. I think we're waiting on that one, on the March twenty-eighth.
Yeah, I think we said, why, why not, right? Go ahead and, yeah, go ahead and-
It's just for Sam?
Um, no, anyone can go, they usually expect the chair, vice chair to be there, but anyone can go and sit in on the discussion. We'll confirm with the council, we can get your exact time, it was six something and seven something, this one.
Yep.
Or the other, if we have time to pick.
Um, I would take later if I had to choose, yeah. Yeah, the later the better, within reason.
And, um-
Then the kids are asleep, hopefully.
And Caroline, I don't know if at some point, after rulemaking, if we would maybe have like a workshop with, to discuss LD two thousand and three, maybe, a couple of months from now.
With the council, you mean?
I, I think if you guys, I think if you wanted to have some discussion on the pieces that we know of LD two thousand and three, we can talk about it next month.
You mean with the ca, the-
No, just like amongst yourself, I think Cecilia is going to take some time off. We don't have the timing on the rulemaking, so it might be still some holes, but at least to kind of go through that handout, we can kind of tell you what we know so far, if you want to look at it. And then we can talk about some of the things that Mitch was talking about. And we can highlight some holes.
Dig in a little bit more into those, yeah.
There's a lot there, so the guys have got it and then they'll get it again and then they'll get it again, so it's not-
And we'll have more on it in a month, right?
We hope so. We hope so.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments on the schedule? Item number seven is persons wishing to address the board on non-agenda items. We do have one candidate for, ah, ooh, yep. I don't, this is interesting though. I think this is, Hillary, we will get to you. I think this is the first time in my tenure on the planning board that this has happened where we have somebody who wishes to address the board on a non-agenda item. All right, Hillary, go ahead.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for having me. I was just, wanted to check on the status of the adult use cultivation and manufacturing ordinance and encourage the planning board to take action on finalizing language so it can continue in the process of review in a timely manner. And is there, is there any updates on that?
Yeah, so, so Hillary, that has already been approved by the project review board, I mean, the, the planning board here, but the planning board is sort of done with the job that they were going to do and now it's waiting for ordinance committee and town council to develop the licensing aspect of it and then approve it all as a package. So it's been kind of in limbo a little bit, I guess.
Who's loading it up now?
Caroline, do you have a better idea of when the ordinance committee might be working on this?
I, I don't have timing for ordinance committee. I'd say the honest answer is it's stuck in a work queue right now. It needs legal advice with a bunch of other things. We're trying to get a draft out there. I don't know, but Hillary, I'm happy to connect with the town manager on the workload and the timing if you want to reach out to me tomorrow. I'm looking at you like you're on screen, but I can't see you. So feel free to reach out and we can try to get you a better timing. But yeah, as far as the planning board, for now, they're done. The council can't adopt the zoning changes without the licensing. You, you know that. They go hand in hand.
Great. Thank you so much. I will be in touch. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In a second.
Everyone, everyone.
Rosemary, all in favor. We're all in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Mitch, I appreciate your energy at the meeting.
Oh.
Get it done.
Yeah, that's-